Good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center for Thursday, April 20th, 2017. For all those that are able, could you rise and join us in invocation by Councilmember Granville, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor. Continuing with the tradition of inviting members from the community, I invited Richard Dewey from the Humanist Society of Greater Phoenix to give our invocation.
I am honored this evening to open your session with a secular humanist invocation. I encourage all of you to look around at everyone else that has joined us here this evening. There is considerable diversity in this room, just as there is in this city. And with diversity comes strength and beauty. In spite of our differences, we come here with a common purpose. We all fervently aspire to live our lives more fully and to help all of the residents of Tempe to do the same. This powerful aspiration is what binds us all together. At a time in our nation's history when there is so much division, we come together with that common purpose to help create a better world for all of humanity, starting right here in Tempe. During the course of this evening's proceedings, remember that common purpose and continue to focus on that aspiration. Continue to remember what brings us here and what we are striving to achieve for each and every person in this city regardless of color, ethnicity, ideology, wealthy or poor, or cultural identity. It's up to us, all of us. We know that we have much work to do, but we are confident and optimistic that working together, we will create a better, brighter future for Tempe. Thank you.
I would ask if the Broadmoor PTA Bike Crew, could you guys lead us into Pledge of Allegiance? Can you guys do that? All right, go ahead and lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
Head to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is our council minutes. Councilmember Cubey. Your microphone.
Yes, a call for the approval of Minutes 3A, 1 and 2.
It's been moved by Councilmember Cubey, seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Councilmember Cubey.
Call for the approval of Minutes 3B, 1 through, whoa, 17.
It's been moved by Councilmember Cubey, seconded by Vice Mayor Robin Arredondo Savage. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next item on our agenda is our reports and announcements, and I'm going to head down to the podium. All right, my first announcement is the Tempe's 2017 Bike Hero Award. The Bike Hero Award recognizes individuals and organizations that aid in increasing awareness of bicycling and promoting bicycling as a viable mode of transportation in Tempe. This year, the Tempe Transportation Commission received several competitive nominations and selected the Broadmoor PTA Bike Cats as a recipient. Since 2010, the Broadmoor PTA Bike Cats have been improving the safety, skill, and comfort of young Tempe bike riders. They work to promote the love of bike riding, teach them proper bike skills, and modeling safe riding habits. Before each bike ride, they look over the students' bikes to make sure the streets are safe and provide them helmets, and for any children that do not have helmets of their own. Their bike rides have taken them around the neighborhoods, up in Tempe Town Lake, to the ASU campus, and even over to College Avenue, the bicycle bridge, to Kiwanis Park. Broadmoor PTA Bike Cats is helping to pave the way for future generations of bicyclists. I'd like to congratulate Broadmoor PTA Bike Cats and ask them, could you all please come down for their 2017 Tempe Bike Hero Award? And could you all come forward, Bike Cats? Hey, congratulations to the Bike Cats. Good job. All right, the next item, the next announcement I have is today is another exciting day in the great city of Tempe, especially for the talented staff of the Tempe History Museum. The museum has received the highest honor of national accreditation by the American Alliance of Museums. This is a big deal. The accreditation means our museum is among the best in the nation, joining the ranks of some familiar places, including the Herd Museum, the Phoenix Art Museum, the Pueblo Grande Museum, and locally, as well as excellent museums, both small and large across the country. One of the reasons given the accreditation was the staff's commitment to getting the feedback of patrons and building partnerships. I'd like to thank our staff for embracing the core Tempe value. The museum was also recognized for its well-maintained and well-catalogued collections, as well as the educational programs and their collaboration with Tempe schools. The accreditation process isn't a short or easy one. It took several years and a group of dedicated people to really make this happen. It started with retired museum manager Amy Douglas. Hi, Amy. Who is here with us tonight. Since then, the entire staff, our museum staff, and several city departments and community groups worked hard to make this happen. Thanks to the community services, our public works, and our IT for all your help throughout this process, it also wouldn't have been possible without the support and the input of the Tempe Historical Society, the Library Advisory Board, and the Advocate American Advisory Committee. For those of you here representing these groups, would you please stand? And thanks to all of you who've played a part, but in particular, I want to thank the staff and the volunteers of the Tempe History Museum who strive diligently toward this accreditation for the last two years to make this moment possible. For those present, could you please stand and be recognized? And now, it's great pleasure that I present this certificate of national accreditation to our current museum manager, Brenda Abney. Amy, please. Would you like to say anything?
This was an extremely rigorous process. And it took all of us to make it happen. It wasn't just one or a staff of five to, along with our advisory boards, but so many members of the community. So we thank all of you that participated and those that are recipients of this honor along with us. We are very proud of it, so thank you. You're done.
Double stack up. My next announcement is regarding our boards and commissions recruitment. In partnership with the city clerk's office, the city council would like to thank all of our residents and all of our community members who offer their dedication and expertise to the Tempe's boards and commissions. There will be 16 vacancies on 10 boards and commissions that need to be filled by the end of this year. We do need your help, so please visit the clerk's office website at www tempe.gov/clerk to learn about the boards and the commissions, and please apply. Applications are also available in the back of the city council chambers or in the city clerk's office located on the second floor of City Hall, right here in this building. That does it for my announcements. All right, Mr. Manager, do you have any announcements?
None at this time, thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. All the items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk, and council members may remove any item for separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on a public hearing item, could you please fill out a speaker's card, which could be found in the back of the council chambers, and please give it to our city clerk. I will call your name and it's your turn for public comment. The consent agenda is as follows. The miscellaneous items, items 5A1 through 5A12. Awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B13. Resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C3. Again, any agenda item that is marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item, and it can be removed for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, could you please get my attention on the consent agenda only at this time? Seeing none, I would look to my council colleagues. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you would like to have removed for separate consideration? No? Seeing none, I look for a motion regarding the consent agenda as read. It's been moved by Councilmember Cubey, and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Definitely be me. Everybody moved but you.
For some reason, the display is not displaying, but that vote passed 6 to 0.
That vote's passed 6 to 0 with Councilmember Navarro absent. The next item on our agenda is our non-consent agenda. All the items on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. The first section of the non-consent agenda is miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. Item 6A1 is awarded a construction manager a risk contract to Arch and Gardner Construction LLC and Professional Services contract to C. Williams Construction Engineering Incorporated for the water line replacement project for the Brentwood Manor and Tempe Royal Palms neighborhoods that are bound by College Avenue and Dorsey Lane and Southern Avenue to Alameda Drive. Is there any comments or discussion under item 6A1? Is there a motion on item 6A1 from the council? It's been moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Survivor, please vote.
Mayor, that motion passed 6 to 0.
That motion passed 6 to 0 with Councilmember Navarro absent. The next item is item 6A2, is awarded a one-year contract with four one-year renewal options to Signa Dental Health Plan of Arizona Incorporated to provide a dental preferred provider organization plan and a dental health maintenance organization plan for eligible city employees and their dependents. Is there any comments or discussion under item 6C2? Is there any, is there a motion regarding item 6C2, 6A2? It's been moved by Councilmember Cubey. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Robin Arredondo Savage. Please vote.
Mayor, that motion passed 6 to 0 also with Councilmember Navarro absent.
That motion passed 6 to 0 with Councilmember Navarro absent. Next item is item 6A3, is awarded a two-year contract with three one-year renewal options to Robertson Industries Incorporated and Flex Ground LLC for the purchase and installation of Urbanize Playground Safety Surfacing used at city parks, playgrounds, and facilities. Is there any comments or discussion for item 6A3 or a motion on item 6A3?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Please vote.
Mayor, that motion also passed 6 to 0.
Next item is item 6A4, is a holding public hearing to review the expiration of a scheduled for development and planned area development overlay for Six and Wilson Custom Lots located at 430 West Sixth Street. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone, would the property owner like to make a statement? If the property owner is here. Seeing none? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? This is a public hearing item. I will close that public hearing portion. Is there any comments or discussion from council under item 6A4? Yes, Councilmember Granville.
I just have a question, and honestly, I didn't notice this until I was just jotting my notes here. Why is this one listed as a single public hearing item when normally we get a first and a second read? Was it because of the way that it was initially written, or?
Mayor, Councilmember Granville, this request is an expiration of the time schedule for the PAD entitlement. So this is the administrative hearing to decide whether or not we extend the entitlement period or move for a reversion process, which would require then a neighborhood meeting and two public hearings with council.
So what is the effect of a yes vote versus a no vote? I'm sure I'm voting the right way. Or the way I intend, I should say.
But before you do that, is there a cost associated with reversion? Does the owner of this property want it to revert, or they just want it to go away? Have they expressed anything? The cost associated with doing a reversion process is approximately $600. It's a burden of the cities for a public hearing signage posting. The applicant, or the property owner of the property has identified that they do not intend to move forward on these entitlements. The project proposal is for individual, single-family custom lots. The current zoning district at the time was multifamily. Staff's recommending approval to retain the prior entitlements so that at the time, if something changes on the property, city council would have an opportunity then at that time to discuss the development proposal. So you're recommending to retain the existing PAD? That's correct.
Is that a yes vote or a no vote that does that?
You'd have to make a motion to retain the existing entitlements.
Depends on the motion.
Councilmember Keating. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion to retain an existing PAD by Councilmember Keating, and he's seconded by Vice Mayor Robin Arredondo Savage. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Mayor, that motion passed 5 to 1 with Councilmember Granville voting no.
All right, thank you. Next item is item 6A5, is to consider and take action on the letter of reprimand for a violation of the council code of conduct. Is there any comments or discussion from the city council? Councilmember Cubey.
These guys are talking. So two weeks ago, we had a work-study session on this topic. Just want to get attention, sorry, folks.
Councilmember Survivor.
Thank you, Mayor. And sorry, Councilmember Cubey for interrupting. We don't have, at least since I've been on the council, I can't remember anyone voting to abstain unless they had a conflict of letter on file. And so is it best for Councilmember Granville to leave the dais if he wishes to abstain from voting, or what's the plan?
I would ask our attorney that we hired for our outside counsel on this, Mr. Shields. I think it's kind of what you said at the last meeting.
Pardon me?
Go ahead.
Am I in the right location this time?
Could you please state your name and why you're here?
Burr Shields, attorney with Aka Chang, hired to conduct the investigation in regards to the matter we're now discussing. I don't see any problem with you remaining during the discussion. Any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
All right, with that, Councilmember Keating?
So two weeks ago, we had a discussion and work-study session with all the council members. And it was my thought and intention that we would make a decision to go forward with a letter of reprimand, and we would talk about that letter a little bit, but we wouldn't be that much discussion or necessary. But I feel just, in some, you'll hear about why I want to talk about this now, but I want to dispel some of the myths, I think, that are out there in the community about why we're here specifically. And forgive me if it takes a little time, but I think it's really important to be transparent in our thinking and what I'm thinking. So first, I want to dispel some of the myths about this issue. First of all, council did not start this process and had no part in it until the investigation was completed and the report was made to us in an executive session. So council did not start this process or have any part in it until now. The employee complaint process would not normally involve us at all, at all, except that in this case, the person violating the city ethics code was another council member. That's why it comes to us. And the only body of authority to reprimand a council member is the council itself. Thus, the question was brought to us only after the investigation was complete. So I really want to clarify that, because I've heard a lot of myths out there and misunderstandings. The most important myth, and the most important and egregious, I think, myth that we've heard explained and expressed in the community is that this is about profanity, the use of an expletive. This is not about the use of a profanity. To suggest that is to minimize what the employee experienced. The investigation report describes a 30-minute conversation between a member of our city attorney's office and councilmember Granville in which he belittled and insulted that person's work and judgment in front of colleagues and supervisors. It was an angry outburst from one of the two most powerful members of that work group, two most powerful members in that room, and it left the person who was a victim feel as though their job could be in jeopardy. So reactions since the incident, let me go into that a little bit. I want to talk about the courage it takes. The courage it takes to be, especially when you think you might be putting your own job on the line, to come forward anyway and try and shine a light on what is widely known as a pattern of disrespectful behavior towards staff. I hate to say it, but I want to be transparent and be really honest with the public about this. Someone who comes forward in that way does not deserve to have their experience relitigated on social media, but that's what we've seen happening in recent weeks. It's almost as if this person's being dragged through the mud again. Councilmember Granville posted on Facebook an apology for the profanity, but not for the underlying behavior. He has then allowed social media followers to comment blaming the victim and suggesting oversensitivity or political motivations, that this person is a baby. There's a lot of statements I could show you, ad nauseam, when everyone in that room knows what really happened. It's actually a very cruel, a cruel posting, a cruel behavior on Councilmember Granville's part. And if he were truly contrite, he should have shut down those types of attacks on social media immediately. Instead, he responded, in some cases, agreed or laughed, lol'd, in response to some of the posts. As I said before, we as a council are the only ones that can discipline other council members. It's not a comfortable situation. No one's comfortable here tonight. No one's happy about this. This is the first time in Tempe's history where we've done something like this. But this is a responsibility that I for one take really seriously, and I think it's vital that our city employees know that they're protected, that we have their backs, and that we're capable of policing our own. I'm getting there, Mr. Mayor. It's incredibly disappointing to read the report about the original event and what happened, but it's even more disappointing to see Councilmember Granville's public response since. The lack of remorse and minimization of the events are evident. I want to suggest some additional language to the letter of reprimand, and perhaps everyone should go around and speak before I speak that suggestion. What do you think, Mr. Mayor?
I mean, we could do that.
Okay. I have some amended language, but I'm happy to wait and see what others have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the dais that would like to make a comment? Yes, Councilmember Navarro, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, man.
Is there anyone else on the dais that would like to make a comment? Vice Mayor Robin Arredondo Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. I think first and foremost, I just appreciate the work of Mr. Shields. Thank you for taking the time. I really do appreciate it. Obviously, in 2009, we created, or the council before us, created the code of conduct for a reason. And I think we all know that the reason was to make sure that we, as a body, as a council, conduct our business legally, and in fact, it says this right in the code of conduct, legally, ethically, and beyond reproach. And I have to say how much I really value our employees and what they do and respect them. And I think it's so important that we treat everyone with respect, with fairness, and for those that feel that they're mistreated in any way, that they know that their voices will be heard, and there'll be some action taken. So that's why, a couple weeks ago, when we had this discussion, I supported the idea of moving forward with the letter of reprimand, because I think it's really important that we continue to do that. I think in Mr. Shields' report, it was concluded that Councilmember Granville did violate the code of conduct. There was also mention of four other instances with employees and a reputation of being abrupt and abrasive types of behavior. I, to me, I look at it like a pattern of behavior that is just not acceptable. And it is so important that we make sure we hold ourselves accountable and that there are consequences for our action. So I have to just say, I'm sorry that we're here and we're at this point and we're having this discussion, but I think it's so important that, like I said, we hold ourselves accountable and to the highest standards. So with that, I support the letter of reprimand moving forward. I don't believe this pattern of behavior, these instances that have been noted, are what our employees deserve or our residents deserve. And I'm open to hearing your changes within the letter, Councilmember Cubey, moving forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there anyone else? I just want to make one comment about what has been said, and it is unfortunate that we're here. Nonetheless, though, the city of Tempe must uphold a strong and ethical values as an employer. And we want all of our employees to feel safe and secure or empowered in the workplace. And no one should feel threatened, and it's critical that we maintain a great work culture here in the city of Tempe. And I think that's so important with a lot of things that have been said. Does anyone else would like to make any other comments? Councilmember Cubey? Microphone.
I'd like to suggest the following amendment to the letter to be as the last three paragraphs of the letter. So here goes. So reading all the letter up till the last couple paragraphs, I guess I should make it clear exactly where it places, but anyway, here we go. "To be clear, your city council colleagues are not judging you for your use of an expletive. We are taking this unprecedented action, begun with an employee complaint and investigated according to established rules and procedures because you belittled a city employee over the course of a 30-minute discussion and disparaged his/her reputation in front of his/her colleagues, supervisor, and another council member. We are also concerned about a pattern of disrespectful treatment of other staff described in the investigative report, as well as your minimizing the employee's grievance displayed in recent social media." in recent social media posts. For the above reasons, your colleagues in the city council have determined that your conduct warrants this written reprimand. In addition, we ask that you submit a formal letter of apology to the employee you mistreated and include that letter in the public record. In 2009, Tempe City Council voted to apply the same moral and ethical standard of behavior we expect from our employees to the council members themselves. Moving forward, we expect that you will treat city staff with respect and professionalism." And that is my suggested amendment.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Kubi. I have one piece of legal advice in regards to your suggested additional language. I believe that the only issue before the council right now is Mr. Granville's conduct during that work group study meeting. And if we address the recent social media posts, that's beyond the scope of my investigation and I believe beyond the scope of what's in front of you right now.
So you're suggesting that should not, that should be omitted?
Pardon me, sir?
That part, that language should be omitted?
I believe so. And I think the council should make it clear, even though I understand, like we talked before, you can't erase your memory, that's a separate issue. It was before you, is Councilman Granville's conduct on January 11 during that meeting only.
Councilmember Shpiver.
Do you have a written copy of that that we could look at while we're discussing it? Can we get copies made?
Yeah. Let's see, how do we do that? I have it.
Why don't you reread it with that paragraph again and see if that suffices, and then you can get your, a written copy.
Okay.
Where would that go in terms of looking at the letter? And let Mr. Shields announce.
Yes. Placed as the second-to-last paragraph on page two before the current paragraph that begins "For the above reasons."
Oh, okay.
So should I read it again? Or just, okay. "To be clear, your city council colleagues are not judging you for your use of an expletive. We are taking this unprecedented action, began, I'm sorry, begun with an employee complaint and investigated according to established rules and procedures, because you belittled a city employee over the course of a 30-minute discussion and disparaged his/her reputation in front of his/her colleagues, supervisor, and another council member. We are also concerned about a pattern of disrespectful treatment of other staff described in investigative report." Next paragraph. "For the above reasons, your colleagues on the city council have determined that your conduct warrants this written reprimand." Period. "In addition, we ask that you submit a formal letter of apology to the employee you mistreated and include that letter in the public record. In 2009, Tempe City Council voted to apply the same moral and ethical standards of behavior we expect from our employees to the council members themselves. Moving forward, we expect that you will treat city staff with respect and professionalism." How does that sound?
That language is within the scope of my investigation and well within the parameters of your power right now.
Councilmember Shpiver.
Councilmember Kubi, if you could just read the one sentence that started with "we are concerned," I think it was the end of the first paragraph.
"We are also concerned about a pattern of disrespectful treatment of other staff, described in the investigative report."
And Mayor, Burr, do you think that that sentence is okay? Did you hear the sentence that she just read?
I did.
Okay. The pattern piece, I mean, did you investigate the pattern?
Yes, I'm going to grab my report.
She said it was in the report.
Okay.
Be the last part of that.
"We are also concerned about a pattern of disrespectful treatment of other staff, described in investigative report."
One of the individuals interviewed, and I will not disclose their name to protect the integrity of the investigation, conveyed to me that, based upon his/her experience with Mr. Granville, Mr. Granville, and now I'm quoting from my report, page two, has a reputation of being abrupt and abrasive with staff. That's the area of my report where I address that.
Okay. Any other comments? Is there, so is there a motion regarding moving forward with the letter of reprimand with the amendment language that was just read? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Aradano-Savage, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
Mayor, that motion, Mayor, that motion passed six to zero with Councilmember Granville abstaining from the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Next item on our agenda is Item 6B2, to introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of a waterline easement located at the northwest corner of Tempe Town Lake and Scottsdale Road. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 4, 2017. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none? I will close that public hearing process. Any comments or discussion from the council on Item 6B2?
Mayor, excuse me, we need to do 6B1, I believe.
Thought I did. Oh, no, I didn't. My bad. I'm sorry. Let me back up. Okay. My apologies. The next section of the non-consent agenda is ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. These items were read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and votes for these items are scheduled for May 4. Item 6B1 is introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a reversion of the zoning map amendment prior to entitlements for the Miller-Curry townhomes located at 1245 North Miller Road. The applicant is the city of Tempe. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 4, 2017. Now, this is a public hearing item. Is there, staff, would you like to make a statement?
Mayor, members of the council, request before you tonight is to revert the zoning for the prior land use entitlements. The existing zoning district right now is MU2 PAD. The reversion will revert the property back to GID, General Industrial District. The current property and owner of record on the site is supportive of this request.
Now, this is only the first public hearing, but if, just for a question for the next meeting, if this reverts, it goes back to GID, doesn't it? And it's more, it's better for us to have it, to keep it the way it's currently zoned?
It's a matter of opinion, I suppose. The way it's currently zoned is more in keeping with the general plan. However, the longstanding zoning in the area is GID, which is why we elected to recommend going ahead with it in this case, but I guess it depends on what you would like to see there in terms of a land use in the future. Reverting would allow it to develop in a GID manner, which is apparently what the landlord chooses to do at this time.
Okay. All right. Is any other comments or discussion from the council on Item 6B1? Thank you. Next item is Item 6B2, is introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of a waterline easement located northwest corner of Tempe Town Lake and Scottsdale Road. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 4, 2017. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this under this item? Seeing none? Is there any comments or discussion from the council on this? All right. Move on to the next item, is Item 6B3, is introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving the conveyance of approximately 3.14 acres of city-owned land and located at the southwest corner of Mill and Southern Avenues, otherwise known as Danielle Plaza, and authorizing the mayor to execute a development and disposition agreement with Newtown CDC, one or more deeds and other related documents necessary to effect such conveyance and other transactions for the development or of for sale subsidized housing. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 4. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this counsel on this issue? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none? Any comments or discussion from the council? No? Next item is 6B4, is introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designated to negotiate and enter into one or more leases and related documents for the occupancy of space within city-owned facilities that are leased as commercial spaces to the public, and amend ordinance number 2011.35 to authorize such action. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 4, 2017. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none? Any comments or discussion from the council? Seeing none? Next item is Item 6B5, is introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development overlay and approve a development plan review for the new building for vehicle sales for Carvana located at 706 North Scottsdale Road. The applicant is Gamage and Burnham. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 4. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us on this? Could you please get my attention? Now, is there a comment or discussion from the applicant?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, for your record, my name is Monjulaboz, law firm of Gamage and Burnham. I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so it won't take a lot of time. We're happy to make a full presentation. Carvana, as you may know, just moved their corporate offices to Tempe, so we're really excited to come talk to you about their online sales and their new vending machine that we want to show you the presentation, but I think, unless you have some questions, we can do a full presentation next time. If I can do that.
Vice Mayor Savage.
Thank you, Ms. Voz. Just a couple of questions of clarification, because I've heard a couple of comments from the neighbors, and I thought maybe you could just take a quick second to explain the operations a little bit more, because it seems like people are incorporating that as like a used car sales lot, but the impact that may have in regards to traffic and parking needs, if there's any, or storage of cars. Just to clarify the overall operations of how it works.
Yeah, if I could do, actually, I can do it quickly, but yeah, Greg, if you could do the presentation, Mr. Mayor, we can do it really quickly, just quickly. And Vanessa McDonald is here, and she can do a full presentation next time. I will probably not do it justice, but at least I can do the story. So Carvana sells online cars, used cars. It is a car, you buy cars online, there are three ways for distribution, and I'm going to tell you a little story. So I'm sure this is operating now, it's an online website, if anybody would like a car. They sell late-model cars, and they're very specific in that you can go on that website, twist it around, see exactly what you want to buy. So the entire buying experience takes place online. When you buy a car, you can have it delivered to you in three different ways. Right now, two, soon to be three, in Arizona. The first way is they will deliver it to your house with direct delivery on their car. The second way is customer pickup, which you can go to their warehouses, which are typically located in industrial areas. I believe they have one in Tolleson, and you can go pick up a car. And the third way is the way we're introducing, we would like to introduce here, is the vending machine concept. So the, and I can show you the experience, we can make this play. It'll take two seconds, a cute little video. Anyone wants to see it? Let's go see it. Oops, oops, oh, wait, wait, sorry, I messed that up. Sorry, Greg. Get a vending machine when you buy, you get a little coin when you buy a car. You put it in. It allows you to have a car experience, even though you bought it online. This is just a pickup location, so all of these cars have been resold. There are no, it's not a car dealership, but I'm going to talk about this. And we get the sales tax. And you get the sales tax. 100% of the sales tax, public property, it's like. For our residents. For your residents. At me, the resident. So, for people who want to have an experience, because they spent all that money online, but they didn't, they want to have an experience with a car. And so this, you know, it's really, they're disrupting the auto industry, and it's a tech play, and they're very excited about it. And they have corporate headquarters, and it's going to be cool. And so one of the things.
Wait, where is the corporate headquarters?
It's in Tempe.
I just wanted to.
Here's a picture. I'm getting there. In my quick presentation, I'm getting there. So you can see that tip is different from traditional car dealers. These are all, these cars have all been purchased. They're sitting there to be bought. There are no gas pumps, there are no loudspeakers. You have general operating hours like, you know, like any business. People are only coming there when they've already purchased a car, so there aren't salespeople. We have people who are there to help you have an experience getting your car, you sign the paperwork, and then you leave. So we think it's actually very, it'll be a great use. The site is already zoned GID, it's zoned industrial, so we're not changing the use of the site. And we've actually, we have, and Deb can certainly attest to it, we have spent a lot of time with the neighbors in North Tempe, and we have support from the people we've spoken to. And I think the people, you know, we're really excited. Carvana's really excited, it's a new experience, and I can go on more, but you can kind of see how, you can see, you can kind of do kind of car sales in smaller lots as an acre versus typically a seven acres that you would have for a typical car dealer. Does that answer your question? I'll just show you the Liberty Center, just to, see, Carvana has moved to Tempe, and they're building it, almost move in, I believe, in June. Right, Vanessa? Liberty Center at Real Salado.
Great. Any other questions?
No, I just, thank you very much, Ms. Voz. I just think it was really good. I knew we could clarify a couple of things that may be some misperceptions out there, so thank you for that. And I have to say, you know, welcome, Carvana, your regional headquarters. That's so great that you're going to be in Tempe. I think it's going to be a good fit, and this looks like a really fun and interesting concept, so I'm anxious for it to come to fruition. Yeah.
So we're going to show coins next time at our presentation, so we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion under Item 6B5? Again, this is only the first public hearing. The next item on the agenda is Item 6B6, is to introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for zoning map amendment, planned area development overlay, and approval for development plan review for 18 single-family detached homes for Shadow Rock located at 2722 North College Avenue. The applicant is Gamage and Burnham. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 4, 2017. This, the applicant, like to make a statement on this? Ms. Voz, no? All right, this is a public hearing, it's only the first public hearing. We will have another one on May 4. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under Item 6B6, which is the Shadow Rock Development? Yes? Yes, please come forward. I don't have a card.
Hi, I'm Kim Gaffney Loza, and I just wanted to let you guys know my experience with this project, and they have gone out of their way, I think, to try to address the neighborhood. In fact, I wish all projects, the developers made that much of an effort. And having had experience with this developer, I'm a postal carrier on my route, everything they said, I pretty much have seen developed as they have developed the neighborhood on my route. So I just wanted to say that I am for it, and I think that they've made a great deal of effort in trying to please as many of the neighbors as I could. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is a first public hearing. Is anyone else, any audience wishing to address us? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none? I will close that portion. Any comments from the council? Next item is Item 6B7, to introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for medical marijuana amendment consisting of changes within the zoning and development code that regulate the location, operation requirements, and number of dispensaries in Tempe. The applicant is the city of Tempe. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 4, 2017. Staff, would you like to make a statement?
Well, based on the input that we received at the last work-study session, we brought forward a code amendment that would essentially remove the artificial limit of two dispensaries in favor of the typical separation distances that are already in the code, and then we have further increased or doubled the separation distance from a quarter mile to a half mile between dispensary locations and left the remaining separation distances as they currently exist.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing item. I do have some cards for this. Daryl DeSantos? If you're not going to say anything? Oh, let's see, you don't want to speak? Okay. Mike Colburn? Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
My name is Mike Colburn, and I live at 7809 South 30th Way. And I'm Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for taking the time to let me speak to this issue, but I'd like to state that I think we all know there's currently two dispensaries in Tempe, and there's been allocated two additional dispensaries to come into Tempe. I represent one of those dispensaries that has been allocated by the state to open in here. We've been allocated our license in the city of Tempe, and we're only able to open it. We've been allocated our license in the city of Tempe, and we're only able to open our license in the city of Tempe. It's the only place in the state that the, they will allow us to open. There's currently the cap, the hard cap of two dispensaries in the city, and it currently has no exceptions to that, to that cap. We realize that the city has already voted to try to open up the process so that we could find us a location and open up. But right now, we would, with the current amendment that has been proposed, I believe that there can be anywhere from nine to maybe even more dispensaries that could open up in the city of Tempe. We propose an exception to the cap to allow dispensaries that were forced to open in the city of Tempe by the state to be able to open. I think that would maybe address a lot of issues that the public has put in the papers and that we've heard about. So with that said, we've definitely given that language to the city, and I have, I have that language if you'd like to hear it or see it. But we believe that that would, would help address the issues that the city feels for that.
Councilor Spire.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a little bit concerned about that. So I mean, essentially, what you want is special legislation that will only allow certain companies to open.
No, sir, that's, that's one way to try to spin it, but that's definitely not, not the way. It was intended where the state has forced us to open in the city of Tempe. We have no option to open except in the city of Tempe. So with the concern being that if you allow more than what's needed in the city of Tempe, you could have, the way the amendment is drafted now, if it's adopted, there could be as many as nine or more dispensaries open in the city of Tempe with no city council input. So maybe there could be too many, that it just has no input from the city. So the city could limit to four, or eight, or 10, or whatever they'd like to limit it to. Maybe that's two or four, you know, I don't know what the city determines that to be, but then they could, if the state forces someone to open, then that would be an exception to that particular cap.
Councilor Spire.
Mayor, and sir, are there any other companies that are in your position that are being forced to open in Tempe?
There's currently two.
There's currently two. So.
Yes, sir.
Your proposal is that rather than changing our guidelines to meet some standard that makes sense to this council, you want us to only open to the two companies that are in your position?
No, actually, our proposal was to open up to five.
Okay.
So definitely not just, no, it's really not about monopoly, that's not what it's about. That's about, that's the old amendment that was adopted, was for that. We're asking the council, if you decide that it's six, it's appropriate for the city of Tempe, then you put a cap at six. You don't do it through, through making it a mile or two miles or separation requirements, you just put the cap in like it's been in the city of Tempe since 2015. And if the state forces it to be seven in Tempe, then they would be an exception to that cap. So that cap could be whatever the city decides it to be, not two, it's currently two. I think it should be more than two. We proposed five.
Mayor, just one last, one last quick point. You know, were you here when we had the discussion?
I was here for the first, first discussion.
When we were down there talking about?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think the, the point I made there, which I still feel strongly about tonight, is any number you put on it is arbitrary. I mean, I think it makes sense to set, if you want to restrict the locations and, if you want to restrict the locations of dispensaries, to me, I think you have to do it based on a standard. And the standard should be a distance from schools, a distance from neighborhoods, et cetera, but just kind of picking a number out of the dark, to me, that seems like kind of picking winners and losers. Like, okay, the next three people in mine get in, you know? I just, I don't know, I have a concern about that. And I expressed that concern the last meeting, I didn't know if you were here for that.
Sure, and it's, that's definitely a valid concern, that, but that's the way Tempe is currently doing it?
Which is a bad way, which is what I, the point I made the last meeting. All right.
Thank you. Next is, is it Jerib Mackin? Or Jacob? No, it's Jerib Mackin. Okay, sorry. I didn't see, oh, sorry. Evan Peiser?
Hello, my name is Evan Peiser. I live at 324 West Santa Cruz Drive, Tempe, Arizona. I represent the other dispensary that is forced to open in South Tempe, or I won South Tempe, they won North Tempe. We are forced to open underneath the regulations that were set forth last year that limits it to two. I propose that the best way to deal with this is AZDHS awarded a certain amount to Tempe. Right now, they've awarded four total. The two that exist, and the two mine and Mike's. I say that allow AZDHS to put the cap on, and don't put a cap on it, but it was what is awarded here. The problem is if we open up this ordinance to allow dispensaries to come in up to nine, what happens to the next round when AZDHS says that you have more licenses? Now those locations that are valid are going to be taken up by all the dispensaries moving here if we open up the doors. And another thing that people don't talk about, what happens to the community is when we move a dispensary from that community? First of all, the most of the dispensaries that move are outlining communities, that everybody around there has cultivation rights once that dispensary moves. So we open up the state for more cultivation. I know that Tempe is all about business, and of course, bring more business to the city. But what does it do to these other communities? First of all, this whole program's about the patients, not about the dispensaries. It's about providing medication to patients. These patients paid to be part of the program, and they're being deserted based on the temptation to be able to move to a metro area that is a higher profit area. Right now, there was talk of doing something with that at the legislative level, but I don't know what happened there. But right now, even incentivizing, or you know, the temptation of allowing a dispensary to move to this area is allowing these outer areas to be deserted. And opening up cultivation, which isn't, you know, from a regulation standpoint, allowing more people to cultivate cannabis isn't a good thing. That's why they put the marijuana dispensaries in place. But, you know, I say, limited, not limited, allow AZDHS to allow how many dispensaries come in here. They're, right now, they've awarded four for Tempe. They might award some more. So if you let those locations go to the transfers right now, the transfer dispensaries that are going to come in, they'll be all taken up. And then there will be lawsuits next time suing with high-powered zoning attorneys. We've chosen to come in here without high-powered zoning attorneys and do anything. We're just accepting, we're just presenting ourselves to be able to get open in the area we are awarded in. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Keating.
I have a quick, I have a quick question for you, sir. The word "forced" has been used a couple of times in these, these comments and the previous comments. It makes it sound like someone came and shook you down and made you come to Tempe and open up a dispensary. And I just want to know, was that the case?
We are, we are limited to the areas we are awarded in. I'm limited south of Southern, all the way down to Ray Boulevard, or Ray Road. My area happens to have very little commercial property that has 500-foot setbacks from residential at the intersections. I'm being forced to actually have to move to a location that puts me right next to another dispensary. So these ordinances were written because in the beginning, people, the jurisdictions were scared of all the dispensaries being clustered together. But the way they wrote it, it's forcing us to get clustered together.
But there's only two in Tempe, and they're not clustered together right now.
There's two in Tempe right now, but there's about to be two more, and if we open up the floodgates and allow all the other dispensaries to move, they will be clustered.
Are you one of the two?
I am one of the two.
Mayor, I have another question.
No, two more, not the one that existed.
I'm one of the two that just got awarded. I just got awarded last year. It's $2,000.
Mayor, I have one more follow-up question. Would you rather be in your position today or one of the other nebulous two dispensaries that may or may not come in?
Can you say that again?
Would you rather be in your position today, forced to be in South Tempe, or would you rather be one of the two that have been awarded that are not allowed to come into Tempe today? Which situation is worse?
I just got awarded to be here. I'm not one of the current dispensaries.
You're not?
No.
Okay.
I'm one of the awarded new ones.
All right, so, so you have been awarded a dispensary in Tempe but have not opened up yet?
Yep.
Okay.
And you know, and your question is, if I would rather be a transfer coming into Tempe right now, I'd rather be a transfer because I could move to North Tempe. I'm stuck in South Tempe where my zoning restrictions put me in a very limited area. So you know, as your question is, the transfers have an advantage over my license that just got awarded here, because they can move right to North Tempe, where I'm stuck in my area for the next three years.
But as of today, you can't open up a dispensary in Tempe because we have.
We're waiting on the zoning ordinance to be changed.
I see. Thank you.
Which, that's why we're talking about this. Councilmember Keating, or Granville.
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick questions for staff, and I appreciate your One or two questions. Number one, in this case, in the event we switch from a concrete number, so say we set our number at five, I assume the two people that are waiting in the queue would immediately get in. If we instead set it to the distance requirements like we've currently proposed, will those people be at the front of the queue, or will they start the process over and compete with anyone who might be trying to get that space?
There wouldn't be any preference from our department or in the code to folks that the state had given license to. So transfers and the two new licenses from the state could come in based on their own desire.
So I guess, so I think I understand the answer to that. So let's say that we create distance requirements that permit nine, and we get seven immediate transfers that are people that are ready to open tomorrow, like they got 24-hour crews going. It could be that these two individuals got crowded out by transfers before they ever got to a spot to open.
That would be possible, yes.
Okay. Hmm? No, they transfer somewhere else, but it takes them three years, I think. I assume that's the case, right? That in three years, you could transfer to, we put in a word for flagstaff, I'm just saying. Okay, so, I think.
All right.
Say that. Oh, that you open in Tempe before you can transfer. Okay.
If you're going to talk, you've got to come up here. But right now.
That's okay, I don't have any other questions for now. I had one other one, and I forgot it.
Next is Jennifer Corey? Please state your name and residence, place of residence.
Thank you.
Is it Corey or, yeah?
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Corey. I'm in zoning strategies, my address is 3309 East Rock Run in Phoenix. I represent as a zoning consultant, Savacho, which is a recipient of the South Tempe CHA. What they were talking about is there's two different types of dispensaries that are allowed under state statutes and under DHS rules. The first are the ones that the state has issued by CHA. And that's what, what happened is the state went and expanded and said we allowed two more, and that's why we're having to revisit the ordinance here. The second way we get dispensaries is you can do a transfer application, and those are from anywhere in the state. So the language you have in front of you here is kind of our attempt to kind of address the issue, because if we go and put the spacing in, frankly, we're fine with that, we can come in. But the reality is, is by, by doing the spacing that is proposed on the ordinance from text is it could be upwards of nine or even more dispensaries. And if you get all transfer applications that come in from other parts of the state, when DHS goes and opens up again and reissues more dispensaries again, you're going to have the exact same issue, and you're going to have to revisit the whole thing, and now your spacing requirement doesn't happen, doesn't work. So the language we have in front of you here is, we've attempted to kind of break out the part between the transfers and the state-issued dispensaries. But again, under the ordinance that you proposed, you know, it works for us. But if you're concerned about having nine dispensaries or having the transfers come in and then having this issue come up again in two years or whenever DHS revisits it, the language in front of you goes and addresses it. So essentially, the language says that anyone, the state-issued DHS certificates, they are allowed by right, and transfer applications are not allowed unless one of the existing dispensaries has left the city. If you have any questions on it, let me know.
Councilor Granville? Thank you.
Thank you. I actually remembered my other question for staff. So right now, DHS.
You can sit.
DHS has granted four dispensaries to the city of Tempe, but we have put a code change cap at two. I assume that, that they're going to, at the very least, want us to change it to four since they've given us four at some point. What if they changed it to 30? Under our current, what we have right now, if we said we didn't have a cap, and we were put in at 30, could 30 show up here?
Given the separation distances, if those were still in place, whether it's existing quarter mile or half mile, it's unlikely they would find spaces there, certainly with the half mile separation.
Well, I guess my question is, my question's a little different than that, though, and that is, that right now, we have, we have a limit of two, but we also have separation requirements. The separation requirements that we're looking at, I think, are more strict than the separation requirements we currently have. They're not, they're the same. Are you saying they're the same, Mayor? Are they, I'm just asking, are they different or are they the same what we've currently got?
Stricter.
They're stricter, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Okay, and so if we just left what we had without any cap, we could have whatever that limit is. By adopting this, we're actually shrinking that number.
Relative to separation only, yes, we're being more restrictive.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Spire.
Yeah, and Mayor, just to, just to address Councilmember Granville's point, because this was sort of my pitch when we had this meeting, was I don't, I don't like the artificial number of just setting a number. I mean, we have, we have opioids available at 40-something locations across the city, so the number is of less consequence to me than the locations. The proximity to schools and things like that, that's, that's more important to me. And so what, one of the things we had talked about in order to sort of limit, and I guess really to limit the number, the language that we put in here was increasing the quarter mile from each other to a half mile from each other. But the more that we've talked about this since that time, and we've, we've heard some proposals of way, other ways that we could tweak this, I think there's a way that makes a little bit more sense than sort of what staff has given us, given us as a proposal. And, and I, staff gave us that proposal based on my comments, so let me, let me clarify that, that was my fault.
Let's just have a comment before we give our amendments, because I have some stuff to say as well. Anthony Cresswell? Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Yes, I'm Anthony Cresswell, and I live at 1920 West Lender Avenue in Mesa, Arizona. Appreciate you guys hearing me. My name's Anthony, I've worked for Full Circle, it's a youth awareness program in Tempe. And my main concern is talking about lifting the cap and ultimately opening up for, what, 13 to 20 dispensaries, I think even at the half mile separation. And our main concern is just it continuing to get to our teenagers, our youth, our young adults, because I work with 14 to 25-year-olds, and one of their, I mean, still, the biggest chemical or illegal drug they use is marijuana. And a lot of them are using other people's medical marijuana, whether it's family member or friend. And I've looked at a couple of different studies, I mean, there's just a couple of facts that I had. I know some of them are from Colorado, but I made sure to get them pre-legalization of recreational, so. But my fear is, yeah, allowing more dispensaries to open in Tempe would affect our mission, which is, we want to make sure our young people don't fall through the cracks. The Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America states, "Research demonstrates that illegal drug use among youth increases as the perception of risk declines." And I think if we add more dispensaries, it's just going to continue to be a little bit more in their face, like they're going to see it a lot more, and therefore, the risk of, you know, starts to decrease, you know, that they really don't see it as a risk, they do see it as a medicine. But for our young people, that's really dangerous because they are teenagers that, you know, want to feel good, and a lot of the ones that we're struggling with. So the other one that I had was, "The perception of harm for regular marijuana use among 12th graders has declined." This was from 2008, 2013, but it went from 52% to 39.5%. And lastly, there was Dr. Thurston, who's a child psychiatrist in Denver, and like I said, this was before they legalized recreational marijuana, it was just for medical marijuana. The cardholder, or medical marijuana cardholders in Colorado are giving, selling, and in other ways, diverting their product to kids. Like I told you, kids I work with have told me that as well. And he also did a study that surveyed 164 Denver-area students, and 121 of them said they had used someone else's medical marijuana. So that's my biggest concern as far as a member of the community, a member of this, you know, a professional in this field, the teens and families that I work with, is I just, you know, I think that we're going away from the message we should be sending, which is that it's not okay to use drugs, and so, thanks for hearing me out.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. You talked about the lifting the cap being the primary concern. If, just comparing two things, the number of dispensaries versus the proximity of dispensaries to places where kids spend a lot of their time. And my question for you is sort of, which is the bigger issue? And so, I'll pose it as a hypothetical. Would you rather have four dispensaries in Tempe where two of them are closer to schools, or six dispensaries in Tempe where none of them are in any proximity to schools?
Neither? Is that an option?
It is, it is an option, but the reality is, I mean, there's two folks that have already been awarded by DHS, and so...
Obviously, my...
Yeah, go ahead. So I was just gonna say, keeping the cap at two is potentially a problem.
Obviously, my main concern is, like I said, keeping it away from our youth, I mean, that's the biggest thing that I am passionate about, and that I think is a problem. I think that we continue to deviate from that. So of course, yes, if I'm given the option, yeah, I'm choosing as far away from schools, churches, you know, other treatment programs, that, you know, I think that should be involved in that, and I think that I would choose that option. Again, my concern is that we just continue to okay the use of mind-altering substances, and that's the message. Again, the teenagers that I work with, that's the message they're hearing loud and clear, so...
Thank you. Next is Robert Cox. Come on down, Rob. Let me guess where this is gonna go.
Thank you. Robert Cox, 300 East University Drive. Mayor and council, I'll keep this brief, because I know you have a very busy agenda tonight. I'm here on behalf of ASU President Michael Crowe and Angela Creedon to oppose this amendment. You may have seen the statement that was submitted by President Crowe and Angela Creedon at the DRC hearing, stating why they oppose this. We think two is enough for Tempe, and we don't need anymore. You may have also seen President Crowe's op-ed in the Tempe Republic, where he further articulated that. I have copies of both that I would like to submit for the record tonight. If you do choose to amend the ordinance, we ask that you increase the separation to one mile, and that you also include post-secondary property to the list of uses that have the separation requirement.
Sorry, I just couldn't hear you. Did you say post-secondary property?
Correct.
I don't know what that is.
ASU property, basically.
What about ASU educational?
Yes.
Educational, but not property in general, because that includes a whole bunch of other stuff.
We would prefer all of it, but I know there may be some issues with that, but yes, that would be our request. Actually, our request would be not amended at all, and leave it the way it currently is.
Okay, thank you. Next card I have is Karen Johnston. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Hi, my name is Karen Johnston, 8121 South Mill Avenue. Basically, I also oppose, and I agree, the article from President Crowe was a good one. I am a long-term Tempe resident, a parent, a community volunteer, and a Realtor in this town. I'm very concerned about my own business, my family. I really can't think of any positive purpose behind the expansion of these dispensaries. I strongly urge our council to take every means possible to regulate this industry within our city limits. Please be mindful to protect our schools, promote our businesses, our home values, and offer our children a positive environment. I would like you to leave the limit at two. I've heard it can go up to 34 via staff. Also, do we want to be the city that is known for pot by having a 600 to 1600 dispensary increase? And I just don't believe that this is the image we want to portray for our great city. And I do think it's ironic that today is 4/20 weed day.
Thank you. All right, I have a question for legal, and then I want to make a statement. Because we have capped it at two, and DHS has offered two licenses for dispensaries, because DHS has offered that, do we have to do that? Or is, if we, could we still keep it at two? My next question is, there have become some legal challenges, which is, at the last time we talked about this, I said we should, if we would follow the state guidelines and mirror the state formula, when initially issued licenses, what that would mean is, my understanding is that for every 10 pharmacies in Tempe, you would have one dispensary. So right, my understanding, I looked up how many pharmacies are in Tempe, there's 50 pharmacies in Tempe, according to the pharmacies. So that would mean that if we followed the state formula, that means it would be only up to five dispensaries, it would be capped. And then that way, we would solve any potential challenges that we would have regarding licenses that DHS issued.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'll try to take that into pieces, if I can, and I may look for help from Chad and from Ryan. So with regard to the first issue, because the state has issued licenses, does not force or require the city of Tempe to accept locations for dispensaries within the city limits. My understanding is, there were one or two applicants who actually filed the application and began the application process prior to our, the city of Tempe's previous ordinance being in effect. So by virtue of the timing of those applications, it is possible that we would have up to four, and I'll look for correction in case my information is incorrect. But just because the state has a number limitation, does not require the city of Tempe to do that. The city of Tempe is authorized by state law to enact reasonable zoning regulations with regard to medical marijuana, dispensaries and cultivation. With regard to your second question, Mayor, I certainly think that is something that the city council can consider with other options, with respect to tying it to the formula that's set out in Title 36.
Okay, and because those licenses were issued prior to our enacting the ordinance, would that be of concern?
I will defer to community development staff. I'm not sure offhand right now where they are at in that process, and whether or not those two have actually opened or could open at this point.
I guess I would ask for clarification, that the two that have certificates that are here tonight can't open now because of the limit of two.
Okay. Yes, Vice Mayor Adama Savage.
And I thought a lot of the reason we're having this discussion tonight was because we were advised that having a set number of two is what's creating the issue. Is that, I mean, I think everybody knows, if I could keep it at two, I definitely would. But I want to know that there was some direction in regards to, we were not able to keep it at two, that we had to talk about what you had just mentioned in regards to the separation, and what would go into the ordinance basis actually having a specific number.
So, thank you, Vice Mayor and members of...
To add on to that, though, just because if you cap something, it has nothing to do with zoning. Does it?
Vice Mayor and Mayor and members of council, I would be happy to have a more robust discussion with you, if you'd like to adjourn and vote to adjourn to go into executive session.
If you, I don't know, Judy, if you could just answer the question in regards to the specific number, or is that something more that would become from legal advice?
I think it would fall under legal advice. I'd be most comfortable if we could have a more robust discussion, if you would vote to adjourn to go into executive session. I will also point out, this is the first public hearing, and we certainly would have the opportunity to talk about this in executive session prior to the second.
That's a good point. This is the first public hearing. Okay, I do have one more card. Craig Keller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Craig Keller. My residence is 2071 East Levine, Tempe, Arizona. I am the board chairman of the Tempe Coalition. As you well know, the Tempe Coalition mobilizes citizens to help youth realize their full potential by reducing underage drinking and drug use through community leadership, education, and collaboration. Our coalition in this city is made up of a group of Tempe community members, business people, school administrators, parents, youth and residents committed to keeping our youth drug and alcohol-free. Let me share some quick statistics with you to put this entire issue in perspective. Currently, over 25% of 8th, 10th, and 12th grade students in Tempe have used marijuana in their lifetime, and nearly 20% of 12th graders have used marijuana in the past 30 days. This data comes from the 2016 Arizona Youth Survey. The Arizona Youth Survey is hot off the press, and we are dissecting the elements of that survey and the statistics now. In the same survey, 71% of Tempe teens see little or no risk to using marijuana, even on a regular basis. In December of 2016, and again in February of 2017, the Coalition stated to this council that we are opposed to an increase in the number of medical marijuana dispensaries. It's based on a very simple premise: We want to limit access of marijuana to our youth. For many voters, one of the considerations to approve medical marijuana dispensaries was the belief that Tempe was being prudent in its actions to limit access to youth in our community by restricting the number of dispensaries to only two. Additionally, as you scour the materials provided by staff, you look at the research that they have done on this issue, there is nothing in those materials which prove an additional need for more dispensaries. The demand for product section on page four of the Request for Council Action clearly proves that based on actual product sales, no new or additional dispensaries are needed. In fact, Tempe is purchasing 15% of the allowable amount of marijuana, measured by pounds. So consequently, what would the need be for more dispensaries to offer additional medical marijuana? In sum, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Tempe Coalition urges you to continue to keep the number of dispensaries at two, thereby limiting access to marijuana by youth in our community, so we can allow them to fully develop into the citizens we expect them to be. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Adama Savage, then Councilmember Granville.
Thank you. You know what, Mayor, I just kind of want to voice my opinion. I think I've already done it in a sense, but I 100% agree in the fact of, I have not understood, or can I understand where the need is to make a change? If there is some concerns in regards to how we cap that number and the way we go about it, I'm fine and open to figuring out what that is. But I will tell you, my, as long as medical marijuana has been around, I have not heard from one cardholder, from one patient, that says they don't have access and they don't have availability to be able to get it. I haven't ever heard from the two dispensaries that we have in Tempe saying that they cannot supply enough to meet the demand. I think we all know, based on the background, that there are 4,200 medical marijuana cardholders in the city of Tempe, and like Craig mentioned, with five ounces, allotted five ounces a month, I mean, they're not even making a dent in what they possibly could be purchasing. So, I know, I have another colleague that talks a lot about the other pharmacies and the availability to the 165,000 residents that we have in the city of Tempe that could possibly be patients and have prescriptions, but they also have pharmacists, assistants, and they also sell other products in those pharmacies. So to me, those, that's apple and oranges, those aren't even, that's not even a concern in my book. The two dispensaries also that we have sold 2,300 pounds, but could sold up to about 15,000. And they both deliver, and according to this awesome website I checked out, Weed Something, it basically says, there's a half a dozen other services that will deliver it for you. So there is, not in my opinion, a need to increase the amount because there is a demand that is not being met. So, with that said, I mean, my, my two cents is that even if you look at the dispensaries and the way they promote and advertise themselves, WeedMaps.com, that's what it was, and the way WeedMaps.com promotes themselves is high Phoenix, and not about medicinal uses. I 100% believe in medicinal uses of marijuana, and I know there are people that benefit from being able to have that, and I want to make sure that they're able to get that. And it's my understanding that they are. I think that when you name strands of marijuana to be purchased, Godcrack, Girl Scout Cookies, Fuzzy Wuzzy, Amnesia, to me, that doesn't talk about medicinal purposes. So, I don't really see the need to be able to increase it. I don't want us to increase it, I'd better keep us at two. And I would like for us to incorporate within the ordinance that we have. Like Dr. Crowe mentioned, I do not disagree. I think we should incorporate the 5,000, 5,280 feet, the one mile. I think we should do that like our sister cities does, it's Mesa, Chandler, and Phoenix. I would also suggest that we add post-secondary schools within the language, too. And I would like to add, like the gentleman, I think Anthony, said, that we create a B2E, that we also incorporate substance and alcohol, substance and alcohol rehabilitation centers. I think that's really important. And I do think that we're doing it for the right reasons. I mean, not always, more isn't always better. And I think it's really important that we continue to make sure that we take care of our families, our youth, and we do what's right for our community. And I think the way it is now seems to be working well, and I don't see any reason to change it. If we do have to address the number specifically, as we will talk about in the next couple of weeks, I mean, I'm happy to have that conversation, but I think it's my responsibility to make sure that we minimize the number of dispensaries that we have in the city of Tempe.
Councilmember Granville, then Shapiro, then Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Vice Mayor Adama Savage in terms of the, and the more research I've done, the more I agree with her, in terms of the distance from other cultivation facilities and from dispensaries that cities like Phoenix, Mesa, and Chandler have of the full mile. I'm okay with that. Now that said, you know, my, which, you know, just sort of addresses like the supply and demand issue, like it doesn't make sense that we need two right next to each other in the city. As I said earlier, my bigger concern is distance from schools and the places that are talked about, parks, churches, synagogues, et cetera, childcare facilities that are talked about already in the ordinance. Now that said, on that category, if you look at our sister cities, the largest distance that any of our sister cities has is 1,500 feet. Scottsdale has 1,500 feet, and that's it, everybody else drops off from there. I think that distance, so the distance currently in our ordinance is less than that. Our distance right now, I believe, is 1,320 feet. I think that is too short of a distance. I think 1,500 is too short of a distance. I would support at least, you know, 2,500 feet from a school, or anything in those categories, the A, B, C, D, and E that we have in there right now. So, again, I agree with Vice Mayor Adama Savage in terms of matching our sister cities on the distance from each other, the dispensaries and cultivation centers. And I do think that we, you know, I do think that we should be at least at the level of the largest distance from schools of our sister cities, or our surrounding cities, but I think 2,500 feet would be appropriate. That would make us the furthest distance from schools of any other city in the valley by 1,000 feet. And I think that would, that would make a difference there in terms of my perspective on the ordinance. And then I also agree with Vice Mayor Adama Savage of adding to the list in 1C, post-secondary, and I think, as the mayor sort of alluded to, I think it makes sense for us to be specific post-secondary facilities used for academic purposes, or something along those lines, as opposed to just anywhere that's owned by ASU. But post-secondary facilities used for academic purposes, I think, is something that we use in other contexts. So, that would be, those are my two cents in terms of how it should be structured.
Councilman Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I definitely can agree with what it's been said. I think, you know, other cities have taken a look at this, and it makes perfect sense that if we do change anything, that we logically change to mirror what those cities have. I think, in addition, and what was said up here today is, when you have rehab centers, and I think Council, Vice Mayor Adama Savage said this, but when you have rehab centers, you don't need a dispensary in front of them or around them. So that makes total sense. You know, logically, you look at the map of Tempe, and you see where the dispensaries are located at, you see where transportation is for us. We have one north and south. That, for our city, I think is plenty. I think we've done a good job on crafting and being ahead of the game. We knew this issue was gonna come up, we knew there was potential issues on businesses and their input, and hearing residents from other cities. I have to look at this city, I have to look at Tempe, what's good for Tempe. I can't look at what's good for Mesa or Scottsdale, because they're tackling this issue themselves. But I think logically, in our city, for the residents that have to use medical marijuana or have medical marijuana for their purposes, I think logically, they're in strategic locations that are easily accessible, either by public transportation or their own transportation. So, right now, I can't foresee anything else, and I agree with the language that's being added in. added in, if it is submitted in.
Anyone else? I just want to, I mean, I've stated earlier, I'm fine with keeping it the way it is. I would like to see more information for the next meeting of what that would look like, but also in terms of if we did follow the state law, what that would look like. I've been in agreement with the mile separation as well as the post-secondary that is education-related. I think that's very important. Councilmember Granville.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I tend to think that picking an arbitrary number doesn't make sense because the thing that everyone's emailed us about is their concern about the effects, right? What is it to have it in my neighborhood? What is it to have it near my school? What is it to have it near my? And so I'm comfortable with whatever distance requirements of whatever locations meet what we think are the sort of values of the community. What I'm not comfortable with is just picking a number out of a hat, right? That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. My concern is, and the numbers that were proposed, I think, are fine. If they seem relatively reflective of what other communities are doing, it's reflective of our community. I would just want to see before next week a map that shows what our city now looks like under that, because my concern is, so let's say we pick one mile, and that makes it so that because of a weird location of things, there's actually zero dispensaries allowed in Tempe. Well, then we're going to run afoul with a whole bunch of issues related to sort of zoning something out of existence, right? People have tried this with strip clubs, and you get sued and you lose. So I think whatever conclusion we come to, I just need to see a map to know that we haven't just zoned something out of existence because we're definitely going to lose that fight.
So with that being said, if we can get a map from staff of what we just talked about with the current requirements, keeping in where we are, what would be with the mile separation? How many would we have with separation from post-secondary? I think that'd be very helpful in our second meeting. Councilman QB, then Councilman Navarro, then Councilman QB.
Yeah, I just basically wanted to back up there because I do, would love to see that map too. You know, and to what's existing, you know, obviously, we talk about opioids and pharmacies and how many pharmacies we have here, and what, the bottom line is, it comes down to the doctors prescribing. It comes down to, if we're going to really, just like opioids, if you're really going to tackle an issue, it's at the medical control, and that comes into play in this. So it's a real issue when we come about how we dispense or how the doctors are to dispense. But I think that what we have existed, just like our pharmacies, that's what we're playing with right now. So going forward, you know, the map will have a big help with us with what we're trying to install with the separation, and logically, we can see what happens from there.
Councilmember Keating. Councilwoman QB, then Keating.
Oh, sorry about that, Councilwoman QB. Yeah, I agree with a lot of what's been said. I think a map would be very, very helpful as far as, you know, this is what a quarter mile looks like, this is what a half mile looks like, this is what a full mile looks like, so that we can have those numbers, as Councilmember Granville said, and make sure that we're covering ourselves from both sides of this issue. I would be in support of kind of the stipulations that we've been talking about a little bit this meeting, and that is the full mile separation distance and the ASU being included as long as it's an academic facility as well. But again, I'd like to see how those numbers kind of play out at our next meeting and once we get that information back from staff.
Councilwoman QB.
So it seems like there's consensus to increase the distance to a mile from other cultivation facilities and dispensaries and to include secondary schools with educational academic purposes, increase that maybe to 2,500, but we're still skirting around the issue of the number because I did ask the question of staff about what that would mean, like throw all that in there, what does it mean? And I think the number, I could be wrong, was still like maybe between nine and 11, nine and 13, which I don't know if we have that intention to do that. So I'm not sure that those numbers, those distance requirements are going to get us.
We'll find, I think we'll find out. I think we'll find out.
But they may also be able to tell us. Can you tell us, given those, because I asked that question to staff earlier this week, trying to find the answer.
We'll need some clarification because we've got a lot of different changing here, and I've heard some numbers from different folks. To answer your first question, we did try to come up with a number for the mile from cultivation facilities only, and it does, you know, drop it by a few down to maybe 10 or so. This isn't a precise science. I want to say, there's been a lot of numbers discussed about how many it would allow, and we're just moving things on a map. There's the reality of finding sites and leasing space and all that stuff that changes it generally lower. What this map doesn't reflect, though, is the school changed to 15 or 2,500 feet. It certainly doesn't contemplate universities at all, so those will further limit it. I don't know how much. It might not be much because of the areas we're talking about. It might be a lot.
So basically, we're looking forward, the direction for our next meeting is to get some maps regarding what the impact would be if you just followed the existing state law, how many would that fit, and then couple that with a mile distance as well as the distance between and around post-secondary education. I think that's what we're looking at.
Get a consensus on number for the post-secondary and the school piece, 2,500 for all?
And also if you just leave it the way it is. Like what would that look, I mean, how would that look? Just leave it the way it is.
We just want to increase to 2,500 the distance from schools also, from the 1,300 to the 2,500.
Yeah. Is it that, or mile, actually, did a mile, wouldn't that be 2,800?
No, that's 52. The miles and separation from each other.
Yeah, yeah.
And one other, Councilmember QB, the only one who mentioned cultivator, yeah, cultivation. Right now, the code reads from facility to facility without regard to the cultivation. So that would be another change if we're separating all, both of those uses from each other as well.
There's often a dispensary right next to the cultivation spot, and it would be not logical to separate those, you're saying.
Well, you could make that argument. I guess I just want to clarify because right now, we don't separate those two from cultivation to dispensary.
Yeah, Mayor, the key there, oh, sorry. Someone else? I was just going to say, the key there to me is dispensary from dispensary. There needs to be at least a mile between dispensaries.
We'll just leave the cultivations as they are and not separate from those, but 2,500 from schools and post-secondary and a mile from.
Granville.
You better bring it up.
There's one other one that, so a lot of things we're talking about are things that I'd thought of. I don't know if I'd thought of the larger distance between dispensaries. I don't know exactly why that is a thing. The concern that I had was a little bit different because I was really focusing on the effect, not on a certain number, and that is, from residential, it's 500 feet. So that's, depending on how your sort of residential is set up, that's almost across the street, right? It's catty corner on your, so you could have a residential, and it could be, what, 120 yards, which is not that far. You could be within eyesight of, you know, somebody walking out of their front house with a kid or with whatever. So some of the other cities, two or three of them have 1,320 as they're from residential, which gets it at least out of sight as you're walking out your front door. So I'd like to see a map at the 1,320, and I understand this might mean you might be generating several maps under several different scenarios, and I apologize for that, but from my standpoint, the thing I was more concerned about, definitely, obviously, schools, obviously parks, churches, I absolutely agree with the rehabilitation centers, but I'm really thinking like somebody walks right outside of their front door, I don't want it to be right there.
Yeah. Is that enough direction for the next meeting? All right. I do have one more card, Darlene. Did you want to speak on it?
I live in Tempe. I have eight grandchildren who are from 18 to 30. I have many nieces and nephews that are in that same age group or a little younger. And I am not against medical marijuana. I have a family member that uses it. I have friends who son uses it for seizures and that. I know that it can be very effective, but I am very concerned. ASU has worked very hard with their image over the years. They used to be called a party school. I don't think they want to be called the Reefer School or the, down the road. I'm very concerned with the number of dispensaries around Tempe, and especially if someday we go to recreational marijuana, because those dispensaries will be the first ones to sell that also. I am concerned with young people whose brains are not developed, and it doesn't happen until in their 20s. There have, there are effects of marijuana on their brains, on their steady habits, and a lot of things. So I really thank you. I'm so encouraged by the discussion that went on here today by the Baron Council and the fact that you want to protect our young people, protect our schools. I thank you, David, for your ideas. I thank you, Rob. I thank everybody for feeling this way. And I know for a fact that people have not been going without their medical marijuana. There is adequate supply right now, and so just because, I sort of got the gist, just because a couple of other licenses have been granted, that Tempe does not necessarily have to have them come here. So it's supply a need, but I think also people can say that they're planning for a later date when recreational passes. Hopefully, it doesn't in Arizona. So thank you very, very much for, the discussion was great, and I think you're all on the right track. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Again, this is just the first public hearing. The second one will be held on May 4th. I'm sure we'll see everyone back. Next item on our agenda is Item 6B8. It's to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a reversion of the zoning map amendment of prior entitlements for the lemon mixed-use development located at 919 1011 and 1019 East Lemon Street. The applicant is the city of Tempe. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 4th, 2017. This is a public hearing item. Is, would the applicant like to make a statement on this? The applicant? Not here? Then, is anyone in the audience, this is a public hearing item, you can make a statement under Item 6B8. Seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. Any comments or discussion from the council on Item 6B8? Seeing none, again, it's just the first public hearing. Moving on. The next agenda item scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be considered now. These items were read and introduced on March 23rd, 2017, and votes will be taken tonight. Item 6, ordinance and items for a second hearing and final adoption. Item 6C1 is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning and development code text amendment for maintenance within Sections 4-102, general regulations, and approval criteria. The applicant is the city of Tempe. This is a public hearing item. Would staff like to make a statement under Item 6C1? No? This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this under Item 6C1? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Is there a motion regarding Item 6C1? Moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote.
That motion passed 7 to 0, Mayor.
That motion passed 7 to 0. Next item on our agenda is Item 6C2. It's to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for an amended planned area development overlay for a new mixed-use development and development plan review for Phase 1A consisting of two buildings with commercial and office uses for the Watermark Tempe located at 430 North Scottsdale Road. The applicant is Gamage and Burnham. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? Could you please get my attention? Would the applicant like to make a statement first, or do you want to go right to public comment?
Mayor, members of council, if you don't want, it's probably a little easier by make a little presentation first and then have public comment if that works for y'all.
Yep.
I'll make, again, for your record, my name is Manjulavaz, Lawyer of Gamage and Burnham. I'm here tonight on behalf of L. Phoenix 1 and 2, who are the developers, master developers of Watermark Project, which some of you, some of you may know as the old Club Rio or Devil House site. The site I know we've talked a lot about, yeah, there you go, because we all remember Devil House. So I think we all remember where it is. I'm going to go through the beginning fairly quickly to show you the site. It's a commercial mixed-use site, but it's more than that. It's really, we have residential, office, and hotel, and we're trying to develop an experience that you would see in other places, so it's not just a corporate campus or a business park, but also includes a lot of open space for the public, the general public to come play and recreate on the lake and try to start establishing a design standard and a recreational quality on the lake. As you may remember, the site was initially titled in 2011, and this is the original PAD that called for a lot of high-rise mixed-use development. Our current plan is similar to that, but we're trying to create more of an experience, the same office, residential, mixed-use hotel, retail experience. Let me go through here, right here. So the original portion that I am here for, and then I know we have the multifamily following us, but similar, is we're going to do the Building C, which is the 15 stories of an office, and then Building A, 8 stories of retail and a parking garage. Soon coming in our next phase, we hope, will be another office building and the hotel with future multifamily in the back, actually, multifamily for sale and then potentially another hotel pad. I am actually going to turn it over to George Malera, who is our architect with Nelson Partners. I don't know if you all know George, but he was involved in developing Kirland Commons in the Scottsdale Quarter. Here's George. And George is really great about explaining the experience that we're trying to create here, which I think will help explain some of, I know you've heard a little bit about the gate, which I'm going to come back and talk to you about, but I want George to explain what we're trying to do here, what he designed here, the vision for the site, and then we can go from there.
Mayor, members of council, George Malera, Nelson Partners, 15210 North Scottsdale Road. It's a pleasure to be in front of you this evening and to talk about what we've worked for the Watermark Plan, Master Plan. We were selected by David Narduzzi to do this master plan. It's a unique piece of property only because, not only of its shape, but because it's also on Tempe Town Lake on the north side. We think that there was great potential for this. As we started the project, one of the things that we took on is, and one of the things that we do, not only in projects locally, but the work that we do all throughout the U.S. and internationally as well, is we've become known for developing pedestrian-oriented spaces. So for us, it's, the spaces between the buildings are the most important areas that we really focus on. So that was part of the underlying task that we kind of took on this project and really saw a great opportunity to really develop the interaction along the Tempe Town Lake, to really use it and engage it, to really become more of a community component instead of being kind of more of a, you know, corporate campus, but really use it to try to create more activity along Tempe Town Lake, which I think is going to spur on, you know, more development in the future. And this is like a lot of our projects we've done, it's kind of like the first seed that gets planted, and after this gets done, a lot of people are going to see the vision and then really kind of take this to kind of the next level, and that's kind of our hope and our vision for this project. I'm going to, hopefully, I understand how to move this forward. So the project's developed in Building A, B, and C. We have several buildings, but the basic framework is really about creating somewhat blocks and defining spaces, and how do we define those spaces as part of what we do. One of the things that we look at is, there are certain principles that we believe are important, creating great public spaces and great projects. Right now, we are looking at a lot of retail developments. The nature of retail is changing drastically. It's not what it used to be. And so one of the things that we find is that we have to create an experience. It's not convenience anymore. It's not something that, you know, because of convenience, you can get it through the Internet. So some of those principles that I think are important that I just want to kind of just highlight, one is creating pedestrian comfort and really putting the pedestrian first. So we start looking at the project from that standpoint, and that's really what we've done for the project. We are okay mixing cars and people together, but we also like to narrow the streets. We think that narrowing the streets are important. We've done that at Kirland. The street width is only 22 feet wide. Scottsdale Quarter, again, we try to squeeze the spaces and make them tight. We found that, and it's been proven that narrower streets produce slower traffic. You have wider streets, it produces faster traffic, and that's one of the concerns that we have that we'll touch on a little bit further. So we want to create a pedestrian-oriented environment. We want to create flush areas where people can easily cross and creating also a focus of creating public spaces, really kind of significant public spaces, programming them for multiple uses, for events to take place, and also programming them for evening uses as well because things change from day to night. So these are some renderings that just kind of go through really quickly. This is a view across the lake, the south side, kind of an aerial view. And what we're trying to do is create community. So we have residential component, we have hotel, we have retail, we have restaurants, and office users. We believe that it's important to kind of create all these uses together. They create and help create community, and they build on themselves. So office users will be able to come down to eat at the restaurants, just like the office users will be able to do that. Those are the things we want to encourage. So here, you're seeing part of our Phase 1 development, which is showing the office building and the retail and the parking structure, and then the residential on the other side of the lake. So when we talk about creating experience, just like you saw- So, when we talk about creating experience, just like you saw here in the Carvana example that you just approved, you know, it's the retail experience is what you're trying to do, and that's what they've done. They've created kind of this new experience about how to buy a car. We have to do the same thing about how do we create this place for people to come and enjoy. And so, that's kind of one of the focuses that we've looked at, and that means creating a pedestrian-friendly environment, creating retail streets that engage the pedestrian, that are wide enough for pedestrian activities to kind of take place, wide enough for restaurants to kind of spill out into those areas, and creating kind of tall spaces that are flexible, so that as the market changes, we have that flexibility to be able to accommodate various users on the space. So, these are some, you know, views. This is obviously from Scottsdale Road. This is kind of more of an internal view. As you come through the spaces, you can see shade is important, and that's part of creating comfort. So, we wanted to create comfort, but also the scale of the street is also very important. This is showing kind of just an illustration of the splash pad, creating kind of this water element. This is kind of like we did at Kirland Common, I mean, at Scottsdale Quarter, we have the scrim of water that's there. Well, we're going to kind of do the two-point overs, and we're going to kind of create something new, but we want to create this water experience for families to come out here to enjoy. So, after, you know, the workers have gone home, this is the place where the restaurants are going to be active. We want people just to come out and hang out. We want to create a place for the community, so that it becomes part of Tempe's Town Lake that this is where the community comes. This is where they gather, this is where they're going to come and enjoy, and they might not have to shop, but they might just kind of want to hang out. And so, as this water feature spills out onto the, onto the lake, you know, there's a sequence that'll happen, so people can come out and then have kind of a greenscape, spaces for people to just have their lunch, and kind of more of a park setting. So, a lot of the things that we have proposed to our owner to develop is really to enhance that pedestrian experience, and then he's really bought on to this thing about creating this public space that has great landscaping, great lighting, great art. All those things is what we want to do, because I think that's what's going to create this place as a vibrant and unique place that people will want to come to. At this point, I'd like to kind of just, you know, tell you about, you know, I talked about creating narrower streets, that that's something that's important to us, because we want the pedestrian experience to be at the forefront. The neighbors actually, I wish it would have been my idea, but the neighbors had the idea, and they proposed that we wanted to gate off part of the access road that we have. While we believe, and we've now engaged that, and we believe that that's a good idea. One, because we don't want to encourage cut-through traffic. One of the things that happened is the fire department, we proposed narrower streets, but fire said they wanted 24 feet. Two feet makes a huge difference in terms of the perception of how you drive and how quickly you're going to go through. So, that's one of the concerns that I have, is that if we don't have the gate component, it's going to create faster traffic come through, cut-through traffic through that area, and I think it begins to kind of work against some of the principles that we're trying to create. So, we're trying to mitigate that, and I think it's just critically important and really desire you to kind of really focus on that, and the attention to really kind of create a pedestrian environment. We have streets here, we want people to be able to cross them freely, and we don't want to encourage any additional traffic coming through and cutting through our site. I mean, I think that's at the forefront that I wanted you to kind of keep in mind, and that's, again, it's something that our neighbors have suggested, and we are encouraging and supportive of that idea. At this time, if you have any additional questions about the design or the planning, I'll be glad to answer those at this time.
Councilmember Keeby.
So, I didn't have the benefit of being here two weeks ago when the first presentation was made, but there's a very defined presence of palm trees in the development, and while I understand palm trees are aesthetically pleasing and imply a kind of tropical characterization, they really provide very little environmental benefit. There's a study out there that says that they perhaps cool ambient temperatures by one degree, whereas ficus trees, ficus trees, 7%. And in a time where we're trying to increase our tree canopy and increase shade and walking opportunities and all that, I just don't understand why we'd want to put in a lot of palm trees. I understand it for aesthetically, just one small section, but it seems like they're all over your development. Can you explain that?
Sure. One of the things that we have found, and actually, I think that if you, I don't know if there's been any studies done for what we have done at Scottsdale Quarter with our spacing of our trees, but they're spaced about 15 foot on center, the palm fronds actually touch. And so, the whole idea was that we're creating a canopy of filtered light, and we actually get, I would argue with the 1%, it's actually quite considerably more, it's more like, you know, 40% of shade area that we are providing throughout the day. Plus, then you have our buildings that are going to be there, that are also going to be providing shade. So, I think because of the development and the scale of the office buildings, we're also going to have, you know, additional shade in those areas. We've done some solar studies that we'll be glad to kind of share with you as well to develop that further. We are going to have some ficus and other types of trees as well. I think that we have a variety of trees, and that was one of the ideas that we had, is that the day palms became kind of more of an accent to let you know, where are the kind of these nodes, right? It's kind of like our gateway entry and the node of public space, so they become landmarks that people will then trigger and say, oh, I know, I'm going to meet you at the day palm grove. The other areas of the streets, we have a variety of different tree types that will create canopies, and we didn't want to use like, you know, the same tree all the way through the street. The idea was more like a neighborhood, more organic, we want to create different trees, so we have different tree species marching down the street. Hopefully, that helps.
Well, I mean, it does in a way. You can say you're going to increase the tree canopy by planting them closer, but palm trees require so much more water than other hardwood trees. And in a study in Israel, which has kind of a similar climate in some ways, used 1,000 more liters a day than other standard small tree growth. So, I mean, it's also the water use, and so I do have real concerns, and I think that, you know, when you think that 2040, by 2040, these are predictions and expectations that ASU scientists have come up with in looking at our urban future scenarios, we expect there to be 30 days of the year that average temperatures of 120 degrees or more average. So, that's mostly going to be in the summer, but we're looking at a much hotter, drier city, and you're not building this building, this development for just, you know, 20 or 30 years. And I would just like to see reconsideration and, or just maybe an explanation of the water use of the trees and the shade canopy. Will it add to our tree canopy, or will it just add a minimal amount of shade?
We can provide the studies for that, and I think I would maybe defer to our landscape architect, who is not with us here today, but we'll, you know, that's something that we can pay more attention to.
And another thing, and we spoke about this, or I spoke about this with other members of your, of your group this week, is about the solar potential for the buildings, especially the business-focused development. So, can you talk about that, or can someone else talk about the solar potential?
I will, I'll make an attempt. I know that we've discussed the solar potential, and we have promoted, you know, in using it on tops of the parking structures, for example, creating kind of a canopy of solar panels in those areas. There's a lot of different things that we can do for that. So, we find that it's been more economical to get outside vendors to come in after the fact, to put those in, as opposed to us putting them in at this time.
Turn your mic on.
Will there be more in the presentation about the solar component?
I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to make that presentation at this time.
Mayor, Councilwoman Keeby, I think when we talked, we talked about the solar component for the multifamily. What George is saying is, the, I mean, we are exploring the solar component in terms of the parking garages and other portions that we can do in the buildings. Obviously, the buildings are tall, so we're still working on that, but I don't know, we have a specific solar component to show you, but I think we've made a commitment that we will absolutely review, and I think Jason has some language about adding solar, some solar component.
Well, as we move further along in the process, I'm really going to need to see a commitment to solar installation, and I understand that it may not work out with transferring that power to the multifamily units and such, but there's a lot of common areas that could be partially, at least a quarter, solarized, and we had talked about that in our meeting earlier this week.
Yeah, I don't, yes. I think, I think we can make a commitment to explore that. I mean, I don't know, we haven't been able to figure that out, probably three days, about what kind of commitment we can make to solar. But, we will make a commitment that we will look at the solar, and I can make a commitment that we will, because we've explored it, not within the common areas, because we have some other things, you know, in terms of park areas, and maybe some shading, but in terms of the tops of the garages, I think we can make a commitment that we have already started looking at that from the solar standpoint, and at least the same way it's working from ASU. If I can make that commitment.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just a little disappointed, because I know in discussions this week, we were talking just more definitively about the solar opportunities, and maybe there's some folks back there that could address it in future discussions, but...
Well, let me, let me talk to them while the neighbors talk a little bit. How's that? And I'll get back to you about solar. I have one other. Anyway, that's, we will get back to you. I know that you talked to Jason, and I will get back to you, because I think we have been exploring solar about the apartments, and I think we're prepared to have that conversation. In terms of the office park, we have a couple of other amenities that we have not fully explored. All the solar on the office park has just been strictly about the parking garages right now. We can have that conversation, and I'm happy to have it. In terms of the access gate location...
We still need to have public comment, too, so...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We'll go to public comment there to answer some questions.
Okay.
How's that?
We're going to come back, because I'm sure there's more questions.
Yes.
This is a public hearing item, and that was the opening statement from the applicant. I do have one card on this, Darlene. Did you want to speak on the Watermark? I have you down for this item and the next item.
Hi, my name is Darlene Justice. I lived in North Tempe for over 50 years, and we are really pleased with this developer, and we've had multiple meetings with them. We're excited to have retail and new restaurants on our side of the lake also. I think that's going to be great. Having this area where people can congregate in that will be wonderful, too. They've been really good to work with in that. They haven't promised us a lot of things to say this and that. We did bring up the issue of cut-through traffic, and the concern that if people are trying to get off Scottsdale Road and try to drive through their, through their facility and then come under the 202 and down College, there's a real concern, because the neighborhood starts immediately as soon as you go under the 202. We have Papago Park, we have the Dog Park, we have all the different apartments across the street. People go back and forth all the time. As you continue down College, we've got school, we have school bus stops, we have the Evelyn Hallman Park, Papago Park, the Eisengrath House, Sandra Day O'Connor House, the History Museum. We have all these things that a lot of people walk to or get off of orbit and go to. This is a real community street, College Avenue. There are no bike paths on Scottsdale Road in North Tempe. The bike paths are all on College. And, and so, we have a lot of people with bike clubs that go up and down College. We have, especially on the weekends, you'll see them, they're three, three across riding down College. So, this is a real neighborhood street. It only has one lane in each direction and then the bike paths. I will tell you that there's been concerns already with speed on College. We have school buses that I've seen twice park kitty corner from the curb to the middle of the left turn lane to let kids off so that people, because they go across the street. School buses, I've seen that that happened twice. And so, they're concerned with getting the kids across streets. We've talked about maybe putting something, because we have a school bus stop across the streets, and maybe get, I know Deb Gain Bailey's been trying to get the city to do some kind of a way that the kids could cross more safely there. But College is our neighborhood street, and we don't want to have any more traffic. We're going to have more traffic, but we don't want cut-through traffic, where people are really hitting the gas to get from one place to another, because they don't want to be on Scottsdale Road. So, I just really hope that, that you listen to what they've proposed with this, with the gate will really help us. They've talked about that there can be fob access even coming into their facility if the adjacent neighbors want it. But, anyway, this is really, really important. We're so pleased, you know, right now, North Tempe, we're really happy. We have this development, we have the Aura at Watermark that you're going to talk about, and eventually, we're going to get a good grocery store, because we're getting all, we're getting all of these residents in that, and so, we're really happy about that. We have Carvana, which is really a cool place that you've seen. You know, we have the development that's in the old Grace Baptist Church. Those people have been wonderful. Things are going our way right now, and I think that the gate that they're proposing will help keep College so it's our neighborhood street and not some high-speed getaway for traffic that is trying to cut through. And the developer is great, and we're really looking forward to this. Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it.
Sorry, Deb, you're next.
I wrote a letter, and I'm not going to repeat all of that. Deb Gain Bailey from McKinley Street in Tempe. So, I hope everybody got the letter I sent earlier. Anyway, this group has been great as far as public outreach and, you know, coming to our meeting above and beyond the public meetings that are required by the city. North Tempe is changing quite a bit for what is going on around it, okay? We've got a lot going on at the lake, which is wonderful, and I very much look forward to going to this place. And they were very good to make sure that the bike lane going in and up from the lake will be, they've promised will be at a comfortable enough incline, so that those of us who have used that way to get up to Scottsdale Road will still be able to do that. And then they're going to have the nice covered area that we can go and rest and, you know, ride our bikes around the lake and then come back and enjoy their, their space. And so, we're very much looking forward to that. The issue with traffic, though, beyond having this at the lake, there's also a lot going on at McDowell. I don't know if you are aware, but that's going to be just a tunnel of apartments going on at McDowell, that, of traffic that will come, some of it north. We're seeing it already, some of it coming north. So, there, there is a concern that if, we know we're going to get the people who live there coming back and forth. What we don't want is everybody, once that gets on Google Maps, is that is the fastest way, that's the way people are going to go. It just, it, it, it's because it will be. It doesn't have as many stoplights. And right now, when you're in Scottsdale, you have the whoop-de-dos, because they don't have storm drains. We have storm drains, so our street is very nice and smooth, and they get going as fast as they can in the morning, because they want to get to work. So, we're getting people doing much over the speed limit, going through the center median to get around cars who are slowing down to turn into the neighborhood. It is an issue, and I hope we keep the gate, and I'm going to stop now. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Deb. Lauren?
So, with the residents of the Vella Apartments, are you seeing, do they, from your experience, are they generally traveling up College, or do they go on Gilbert, avoid College? How does that work?
I'm not set to watch the Vella people. I will say that Marina area going in and out, it's going to get very busy, and it's already kind of a crowded area with all the traffic that goes through there already. And it's not, it's not a smooth transition there. So, and you get a lot of runners there, a lot of dog walkers. It just, it's going to be a crowded area. I don't, you know, maybe go and drive it.
In your mind, would it make sense for apartment dwellers in the Vella Apartments to have easy access onto Scottsdale Road from, from where they are now?
And just turn on Gilbert. I mean, really, I would take Gilbert instead of driving through the establishment there, because Gilbert is a straight shot, and you don't have to avoid the pedestrians, who we really hope are walking in this retail space. I mean, I see this as a place where, you know, when people come in from out of town, or your, my son comes over and we talk him into going out to dinner, then we'll go up there and we'll walk around, just like we do in Scottsdale today, and it, you know, and it's not going...
What? Wait, what? Are you tax dollars in Tempe?
That's the closest for us.
You mispronounced North Tempe, I'm sorry.
There are restaurants... I, there are restaurants, Udoopy and, and some in North Tempe that we, but I got to say, if you want to get out and walk around, it's not in North Tempe right now and this is going to bring this here.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
All right. Is anyone else in the public wishing to address this? This is a public hearing item on the planned area development, the PAD. All right. Is any other comments or discussion from the council? If not, is there a motion regarding?
I have one little, Julian and I have, in addition to that, we have one simple change to PAD condition nine to clarify it. Right, Julian, that you agree with me? So this is Julian's language. It just clarifies when we, we have to potentially do two turn lanes from the light and it clarifies when that would happen. And I give it to, I've given it to Ryan, I can give it to Brigitta and she can see it.
Give it to somebody so we know what we're doing.
Brian's got it. It, it just says upon construction and occupancy of each building, that's the language he added, we would exceed, if the northbound turn volume exceeds 300 vehicles during one hour, then we're responsible putting in the turn lane. That's the language. We had to clarify the language of how many vehicles would then come up with additional improvements within the project.
That is a amendment to the existing PAD that we're looking at tonight.
An amendment to that condition number nine.
That condition number nine. Okay?
Mayor, mayor, that's correct and staff's in support of this modification.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other further comments or discussion? Otherwise, I look for a motion regarding 6C2 with the amendment to condition number nine regarding the right turn lane based on traffic volume. Councilmember Granville.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment now that we're through the presentation and public comment. You know, I've talked to Manjula and the individuals here for, we've been talking for months about this project. So what I'm about to say, you could probably say for me, but I'm going to say it anyway. Could we go back to one of the slides that shows like the street view? So you can sort of see what it looks like from, from rural? Keep going back. There was one a little bit back that makes it easier to see. There we go, that works. So my concern is not anything I see. I think the project is great, I think the design is great. I'm not a fan of palm trees, but I, that's just a preference and so I'm willing to concede somebody else's. My concern is that giant grassy area that faces rural. So the, the building that you see next to it is 15 stories. The building that is about to be authorized as part of a PAD on that grassy area is 21 stories. At least part of a PAD apparently, the height's part of it, but the DPR is not and other parts are not. And so there's really nothing like that. And across the street, it's already under construction and it's not going to be 21 stories across the street by the In-N-Out Burger. And so my real concern here is not that there shouldn't be density on the lake. Clearly there should be density on the lake. My concern is that there's that much density in a place on rural where no, no other density exists and now sort of definitionally can't exist because it's pretty much built out. Unless someday somebody buys out that U-Haul, feel free to buy out that U-Haul. So, so, you know, clearly I think you've got the votes, otherwise you'd have separated off that parcel for me. But that's the reason that I'm voting no. It's not for the project before me. I think that's a great project. It's for that grassy area that, that someday may be 21 stories and I won't have as much of a say in it as I'd like. Thank you.
Council, Vice Mayor, Eric Dona Savage?
Thank you, mayor. You know what, I just want to say, I really do appreciate, I think, the efforts, not I think, I do know, the efforts in regards to meeting with neighbors and the surrounding areas to really come up with what I think is a really dynamic, fantastic project that's just going to enhance the north side of the lake and I really do look forward to it. I, I don't know about palm trees, other trees. I know I do not have a green thumb, but I, you know, I think that I can appreciate the entire master plan and look at it in a comprehensive type of way and understand and appreciate, I think, the perspective of trying to create that canopy because that is exactly what we want to do, create a lot of shade and make it really walkable and enjoyable, too. So, you know, I appreciate the look and the design and I'm not too worried about that, that density. I know we're going to be expecting stuff on the other side of the lake also, too, at some point down the road. I would say, I, you know, I certainly appreciate the, the thoughts in sustainability. I know that we try to practice what we preach and we hope that, you know, as you, as you move forward, you look at those different options, whether it's solar or other methods. I mean, that's not a deal breaker for me, but I think it's really important that, you know, you at least address it and, and see where you can definitely make a difference when it comes to sustainability because I think that's what we, we hope that all of our partners in the future will do. So I, I would appreciate you being able to do that. So, and, and I'm fine with the amendment, the way it was read in and with that, mayor, I'd like to move approval.
There's a motion to approve item 6C2 with the amended condition to number nine and there's a second by councilmember Keating. Any other comments? Councilmember Navarro? And then councilmember QB.
Yeah, just briefly, mayor, I think it's an outstanding project. I'm excited. I appreciate the developer and others sitting down with me to explain thoroughly the ins and outs and how it relates and how it, it, it plays along with the environment. I, I, you know, in terms of, you know, I was the guy that loves the trees and everything like that. I do like the palms, too. So I think you guys have expertise and value in this and your, your, your knowledge in the open space and urban space and what you're creating there, I think is outstanding. So I'll be voting for it.
Councilmember QB.
So I really appreciate your dedication to green building principles and actions and we talked about, a lot about that in our meeting earlier this week. I really would like to see you work with Braden Kay, our sustainability manager and our, our water staff on talking about different sort of tree options because we have an urban master forestry plan that's going to increase our tree canopy, we hope, from our 13% to is it 40%? I can't quite remember the number, but really would like to see us, help us get more toward our goal and not further away from our goal. So I would really urge you to work with Braden and the solar issue. I mean, when we get to the DPR, it's going to be really crucial to me to see that there's movement made on that because if, if you guys can't do it when you have, you know, interests who are behind this project who really want to see green building and really want to see as close to net zero as you can, if you guys can't do it, I don't know who can. If you want to set the standard for the lake, that needs to be part of that standard. So I'll vote yes today, but I'm going to be really looking at the DPR very closely.
All right. Any other comments or discussion? With that, please vote.
Thank you. That motion passed six to one with councilmember Granville voting no.
Okay. Next item is item 6C3 is to hold a second final public hearing adopting ordinance when amended planned area development overlay and development plan review phase 1B consisting of new seven-story multifamily residential for Aurora Watermark located at 430 North Scottsdale Road. The applicant is with you, Morris, PLC. This is a public hearing item. Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Mr. Mayor. Jason Morris with you, Morris, on behalf of the applicant. Thank you very much for your time. I know you're all very familiar with this, not only based upon your comments at the last hearing, but also based upon the opportunities we've had to share with you, different aspects of this project. It's also quite clear from your last vote that you understand the surroundings and where we are and the environment in which we're developing. I can tell you, and I think I referenced this at the last meeting, having done this for almost 25 years, as I look at the project that's before you, in its class, there is no better project, there is no more unique project, and there more, is no better site-specific design for this multifamily project that you'll be bringing forward. As we look, and of course, this is the, the lake view and we'll go back to this rendering a little bit later in the presentation. The two applications that are before you are both the second amended PAD as well as a DRP for this particular site. That, obviously, the, the development plan incorporates the 3.9 acres that are at the heart of this application. The site you're familiar with obviously encourages and encompasses much of the frontage. It also provides the window for the overall Watermark site. We'll look at how it interacts with that site. This is the amendment to the master site plan that we're discussing this evening and what that existing plan shows as. Just to briefly touch on both your general plan and the overlays for this area, obviously, this entire 14-acre site is in keeping with your existing land use plans, but as we look at this specific almost four-acre site, they also fall in line with your general plan showing mixed use with the, the projected density, obviously at 90-plus dwelling units per acre. And again, with the zoning map, we're all within keeping of those areas. What I'd like to do in light of the council's discussion in the previous meeting is to really touch on those issues. As we look at the site itself, and I'm going to do this and hopefully the, the next five renderings that you see will touch on many of the issues that were raised. First of all, and I believe foremost, mayor, I believe this is your comment about you'd like to see a development that has to be at this site. And if it could be developed anywhere within a metropolitan area, it's not appropriate for this site. So if we can start with this rendering, hopefully this gives you the, the look and feel of what we're discussing. This site could not be built and should not be built and frankly, wouldn't be built in any other site. The money wouldn't be spent for development of this caliber in any other site but on the bank of Town Lake. As you look at this, it also gives you a good sense of scale. You have just approved in your previous case, the overall plan for Watermark and Watermark is dependent upon a series of heights and intensities to be successful. If all of the height and intensity is on the shore itself, it devalues the rest of what you've just approved. So in keeping with the quality and the design of what you heard from George Malera at Watermark and, and the Watermark Development Team, this site is specific to this wedge of property. This allows development. As you look at this site, you can see in the background, the height of that office building. The height of the office building is directly commensurate to what's being developed in front. As you see on the very far right-hand side of that exhibit, the parking structure, the parking structure is the same height, which allows the office building behind to see over. It's exactly the same design and concept as why our height tops out where it is. This again, gives that illustration of how this fits into the better Watermark plan and the overall plan, but this also gives you something that you don't see in other cases and something that you haven't seen, mayor. That is, you've got 15 walkout units that are 20-foot clear height units on the bank of the lake. These are multi-story units. You have multi-story units within the development itself. You also have the benefit of the activation of the lake. This shows in the foreground, the dock, how the dock can be utilized. I think you know the programming that's planned for this building includes water sports. As we look at this, we see the fitness center. That's in the foreground. This fitness center that floats in the middle of that development, again, not something you would see in any other development of its kind or class, but I point this out for councilmember QB because this also offered, is one of the opportunities that we've talked about for a solar component. I picked up very subtly, as Ms. Valls pointed out, that it's my job to mention this. So I will talk about the fact that we have agreed to a solar commitment on this. We can't quantify that at this point, but we're saying more than we're just taking a look at it, we're going to explore it. There will be a component that's incorporated in this project. As you look at the water wall, this is the secondary pool. If you'll bear with me, I'm trying to do as much of the sales pitch as I can without belaboring every single quality point, but there's so much in this project that this is a, a 20-foot water wall, the, the benefit here, this isn't something the residents of Aura at Watermark are going to be really utilizing. This is something that is viewed from the lake. It will be visible from rural as you're headed northbound and it's a significant feature that again, you wouldn't do this anywhere else in the valley. This is the, the opposing viewpoint. It's actually looking south from the main pool area through the fitness center. I would challenge you, mayor and council, to find a similar type of quality, design and commitment to doing something outside the ordinary on any other site. I'm happy to talk about not only what you're seeing, but also what you're not seeing, the development quality, the type of construction, the type of interior systems. I can talk about the type of unit finishes that we have that are unlike traditional multifamily units and the level of quality, not only in the flooring, but in the subflooring, in the appliances themselves and the fact that these units have sitting rooms. All of the balconies, every unit has a balcony. Every unit has a balcony that is large enough, even the smallest unit, to have usability. So you can have that chair, you can have a table, you can actually take advantage of it. One of the suggestions actually that we've incorporated here is not only taking this fitness area and activating the roof and creating a roof deck, and I have to give a compliment to staff who have worked with us in order to make that happen because that was an occupancy issue that we helped resolve. It was an excellent suggestion that we've incorporated to make the project even better. I'll also point out that with the balcony system came a look at different door systems that you would see on these balconies so that you could actually utilize more space and it becomes more of indoor/outdoor living. This is one of the final things I'll touch on because this has to do with our neighborhood work. As you'll recall from our previous site plan and discussions with our neighbor immediately adjacent to us, Vella, there was a concern about the amount of open space on our furthest western end. We were able to bring that property back, we were able to keep that open, which not only benefited the immediately adjacent project, which has now a, a window to the lake that didn't exist previously over the, the private property, but more importantly, turning it into additional amenities that don't exist in other traditional communities. You have the benefit of an outdoor kitchen and dog park literally on Town Lake, something that is not part of the ordinary. I can talk more about the public involvement, but I can tell, mayor, I, I think you've heard just about everything that you need to hear about this. Hopefully, it's given you an indication of the quality, it's given you an indication of what we've done to make this different, but to the extent that I can answer any additional questions about either the project itself or how we can fit in to make Watermark the successful project all of you just praised, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, mayor. Jason, I appreciate the slide presentation and, and you guys sitting down once again and talking about fully supporting, you know, what you guys are doing. I think it's a quality project, construction quality also. I know it wasn't said, but I know within the details, you really want to make sure that sound mitigation from floor to floor is nothing like you would see in, in probably just a very standard apartment complex where you're going to hear your neighbor. You want to have these qualities so that you have residents that feel like they're secluded in, in their own house or bedroom, wherever it may be. So I, I do appreciate that. One thing I know is it's a few slides back and, and this is probably with the city and you, but when we talk about the pathway in front of the complex, you have a pedestrian pathway above and below. Am I correct that that is what? Yeah. No, no, the grass is fine. I mean, I love that grass area, but I'm just, I'm just curious, is that, is that all part of the plan up to the lake with the pathway?
Mayor, councilmember Navarro, our druthers, we've actually looked at this and I think this was one of the suggestions that came out of that meeting. In terms of connecting those two paths, there's approximately 50 to 60 feet of distance within the area between the two paths and it's our desire to connect those. We obviously don't own or control that property, but as we look at what happened on Marina Heights across the lake, they were ultimately able to build a staircase there that connects the two because there's about 15 feet, I believe, of grade.
Right.
Within that 50 to 60 feet. So it's a usable area if we get that permission.
Right. And I do appreciate the grass separation from the building and stuff. I just wanted to make sure that, that the, how, what I'm seeing is what we're, what we're looking at, what we're, potentially what we want to get.
Yes.
So to speak, because, because I like the lushness, the grass, you know, and we might, I might differ with councilmembers here and stuff and about areas of town and making sensible, you know, I, I've said many times, our downtown area has different types of trees and they might take more water, but it gives that unique value of what our downtown and our character of that downtown area is, downtown area is. Same with the lake. I want to have value with it and that might be because of the lush grass and things of those amenities. So I, I appreciate that. I just wanted to verify, you know, because we get sometimes these pictures and they look a little bit different. And I'm very involved in making sure coordination, how we address not only just your complex, but how it coordinates with the whole area and flows.
The grass as well, but I also appreciate the solar commitment.
Thank you.
we address not only just your complex, but how it coordinates with the whole area and flows.
The grass as well, but I also appreciate the solar commitment.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Edono Savage.
Very much. Thanks, Jason. I just want to say, I know I kind of put you guys through the wringer, and I really do appreciate your patience, and of course, a great shout out to Ryan. Thank you, because I know he took a little road trip and did a little tour of another complex in Scottsdale, that place where Deb goes to hang out every once in a while. But just to get an idea and understanding of what we're talking about when we talk about high-quality internal finishes, I mean, to just really be able to show us exactly what you were talking about to me, and making something unique that's different, that really does fit on the lake, so I appreciate you taking the time to show us that, and I really do believe that there are high finishes when we talk about quondo quality. We call it a quondo quality, but, you know, I think you've really met those major. And the one thing you didn't really mention is regarding the, I don't know, maybe you did, but the front as it relates to stucco and minimalizing stucco as much as possible, and I think it's down to about 20% now, and the rest will also be, you know, high finishes on the outside, which I think is really important. And I was the one that really wanted you to maximize that outdoor space as much as you could, because I think that's what, you know, when you have an opportunity to live on the lake like that, to have that outdoor patio space is so important, and however we can continue to maximize that, I would, I completely encourage that. And I do agree with Joel. I like grass. I'm a grass person. I think that looks really nice. But I would say too, and I know we ran across this when we went on a tour of the State Farm Building, that they had, and we had talked a little bit about trying to have that connectivity from the top pathway to the pathway at the lake, and I hope that you continue to pursue that path, and if we can help in any way, I think that would be really beneficial to be able to make that connector. I like it for the open space, and I 100% support the rooftop piece. I think if we can make that happen, that would be a really phenomenal addition to it, so thank you for doing that. And I know Todd, is he here somewhere back there?
Yes.
Yeah, right. I like to give Todd a really hard time, too, so I appreciate being really patient. Yeah, part of my job. But, you know, I just, I will say, I was really reluctant. I appreciate you guys doing the condo plat. I think that's really important to make sure that becomes part of the feature. I don't love apartments, and I don't love them on the lake, and I didn't make any qualms about that at the very beginning, but I believe you guys really stepped up to create a really high-quality product within the frames that you had, so I appreciate you doing that, listening to all of us, and trying to incorporate that into the product, and also to the neighbors. I think that's really important, that you're creating something that not only goes not with just the master plan, but with the neighborhood too and the lake fill. So I just want to say thank you and look forward to it.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go around the rest of the council, we got to do public comment, and then we'll come back to our comments. Thank you, Jason. Ms. Sender, Darren Sender, item 6C3.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Darren Sender, Sender Associates, representing Transwestern of the Vella Project. Just like to say that we thank the developers of the Aura project for working with us as adjacent property owner. We had quite a few concerns, worked them all out. We have an agreement in place right now as of today, and we have no intention of any opposition to the project today. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb gave, Deb, no? Same thing. And Darlene? Oh, she left. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address us on the public hearing for the item 6C3? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and I'll go back to my council colleagues. If there's any more discussion, that's great. Also, look for a motion. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. With your permission, I would just like to incorporate the same stipulation, given that this is the PAD is still continuing forward, that you would add the same stipulation change from the previous case. It was PAD condition nine. It was read into the last case and approved.
Good. Councilman Granville.
Yeah, I've just got nothing to praise. You know, as you were doing your presentation, I realized I candidly wasn't paying a great deal of attention. When I looked at my council colleagues, they were all sort of doing stuff, and I thought, you know what? No, not in a bad way. It's a compliment. And no, the reason for that is, is not in a bad way, it's because you've met with every one of us so many times. I feel like any one of us could have given your presentation at this point. And I appreciate that. No, I know you were paying. Well, we can do it. We're multitasking. There's no multitasking that happens. I'm trying to work my way to a compliment here. I'm failing. The point...
The whole colleague's under the bus.
No, I'm not throwing you under the bus. That looks totally different. The point I'm trying to make is, I appreciate that you went and you took the time, along with Manjula and others, and you must have met, I know you met with me three, maybe four times. It sounds like you've met with everyone a bunch of times, and that's why you have a project that everyone up here, I think, feels really good about, not because it started off as a project we all felt perfect about, but because you've worked through it and worked with the neighbors and just worked and worked and worked, until you've got a project that you believe is financially feasible for you, which is, of course, goal number one, but one that we feel is really appropriate for the location as well, which is as well as you, of course. And so, yeah, all I'm trying to say is, the extra legwork works, and I wish more developers took cues from you all.
Thank you. Mayor, and I'm sorry, if you don't mind me addressing that, I have to tell you, Manjula and I, and people who do what we do, we would love to do that on every single case that we bring before the council. First of all, it requires that the council give us time, and I have to tell you, you've all been very generous with your time, and as a result, it's a better project, but clients don't typically give us that kind of leeway. And in this instance, the developer of Watermark and the developer of Aura gave us that kind of time, and also, when we came back and when they heard that there were changes that were requested or suggestions that were made, they incorporated them where they could, and that doesn't always happen. So we only look as good as the people we represent, so I thank you very much for saying that, because it means a lot.
All right. Is there a motion? Yes, Councilmember QB.
So, and I just met with you this week and didn't have as much exposure to the project, and I know you, again, you have a lot of green building principles in mind, but I know you say you're committed to solar, and I know that it's not a black-and-white issue and that it's complicated. It's not necessarily, you can't develop solar in every single rooftop, every building. It's very complicated. I'm the first one to be aware of that, but I would like to see some kind of a commitment. I don't know what you could institutionalize tonight or put into writing that would make me feel a little stronger, that it's not going to be, we tried, and then you come back later and say, eh, it didn't so much work out, it wasn't there. Because we know that what's good about your development and about your investors is that they're in here for the long term, and so they're not concerned about, you know, a two-year payback. They have a longer timeframe, and that's a good thing. So I want to feel some sense that the commitment will turn into action as regards to the solar deployment.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember QB, to that point directly, I've often been in front of councils where I've said, we love that idea. We're exploring that idea. We're looking at all the opportunities. This client, in direct response to your request and your conversation, said, I can't quantify it. I have now met with three different solar manufacturers, and I've met with our electrical engineers. I can tell you, we will incorporate a solar component. I can't tell you today, because we don't have approval, and I haven't gotten that far in my design, the extent of that solar component. But unlike others who may have said, we're going to look at it, I'm going on record, and there are two things that should be significant about that. Hopefully, this isn't the last time I'm before this council, and I'm very careful about what I commit to. More importantly, in this instance, this developer would very much like to come back to Tempe, and they wouldn't give that commitment unless they were able to follow through with it. So that's the extent of what I can say tonight, is we don't have a stipulation, we aren't far enough along to be able to quantify it, but that's sort of where we stand this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on item 6C? Moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Keating.
Excuse me. For the record, are we clarifying that there's an amendment to condition number nine in that approval? Thank you.
There is a motion. Is there? Okay, can someone amend the motion?
I'll amend the motion.
To approve the amendment to condition number nine. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. As amended with... There you go. Yep. Next item is item 6C4, to hold a second final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 29 of the Tempe City Code relating to encroachments and other activities in public right-of-ways, establishing a mandatory process for communication companies utilizing temporary lines in a public right-of-way, and enforcement mechanism for that process. This is a public hearing item. Is there any, anyone in the audience wishing to address this, council? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the public meeting. Is there any comments or discussion from the city council, or is there a motion regarding item 6C4? It's been moved by Councilmember Shapiro. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. That motion carries...
Seven to zero, Mayor.
Next item is item 6C5, is to adopt a resolution establishing a penalty fee for imposed for failure to timely apply for permits to remove temporary services lines. I already did that.
No.
That's the second one, yeah. Adding a penalty fee to the Tempe City Code Appendix A, implementing the annual fee adjustment based upon the Consumer Price Index, all urban consumers west region, and setting an effective date of 30 days from the approval date of ordinance 02017.18. Is there any, this is not a public hearing item, is there? It's not, I don't have an asterisk next to it. So is there any comments or discussion from the city council, or a motion on item 6C5? Moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. Please vote. That motion carries...
Seven to zero.
Next item is item 6C6, to adopt a resolution establishing a penalty fee for imposed for failure to timely remove unauthorized temporary service lines, adding the penalty fee to the Tempe City Code Appendix A, and implementing an annual fee adjustment based upon the Consumer Price Index, all urban consumers west region, and setting the effective date of 30 days from the approval date of ordinance 02017.18. Is there any comments or discussion from the council, or a motion? Moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. Please vote. That motion carries...
Seven to zero.
Next item is item 6C7, is adopt a resolution establishing a discovery fee for the imposed for failure to report temporary service lines, adding to the discovery fee the Tempe City Code Appendix A, and implementing an annual fee adjustment based upon the Consumer Price Index, all urban consumers west region, and setting an effective date of 30 days from the approval date of ordinance number 02017.18. Is there any comments or discussion or a motion on item 6C7? Councilmember Shapiro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to wait till we did the first three, just on the off chance that I might have talked you all out of supporting these four measures, but first, I want to just, I want to thank the team of folks that worked with me over the last two years on this project, and Andy's not here anymore, but he put a whole lot of work into the outset of this, but the team that took over did a great job. And I want to thank Kristen for putting up with me through countless drafts of this. It doesn't seem like a big deal, but if this prevents some people from getting injured from these cables that have been like bolted across alleyways, and anyway, if it prevents people from getting injured, then it was worth the two years of work, and I'm really appreciative also of both Cox and CenturyLink, who although we may have had disagreements in the process, were there every time we asked them to be to provide input and feedback on this ordinance, and I think it'll probably be, like a lot of stuff we do in Tempe, a model for other cities that want to implement something similar. So again, I want to thank our staff, and especially Kristen, for all the work they did.
All right. Is that a motion?
And I move the item 6C7, Mayor.
It's been moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion carries...
Seven to zero.
Great. Next item is our current event in council announcements. Councilmember Keating.
I'm done with me, Mayor.
Councilmember QB.
I have two. So one is, let's see what starts first. Pardon? So I'll just begin. So on April 29th, that's a week from Friday. Did I have the right date?
Week from Saturday.
No, sorry. Yeah, week from Saturday, sorry. April 29th, we are hosting an event at Esquer Park, where ASU and City of Tempe are combined in a partnership. They're going to be planting 42 trees in Esquer Park in Victory Acres, and we urge people to, hopefully it'll come up on the screen, but to sign up and volunteer will start at 8:00 a.m., early morning tree planting, and this is an effort by ASU to really walk the talk and contribute to the local shade canopy, and it used to be that, you know, when everyone goes on a trip, and at ASU, you pay a carbon tax, and that, those funds go towards carbon offsets in other countries and other states, and we decided, let's actually bring it back home to Tempe. So there'll be a tree planting. This is the first of many, we hope. Bonnie Richardson, who is our urban tree champion, she has been crucially putting this partnership together, and it's also, it involves Duke University as well, so urge you to come out and help plant some trees. I know that Jenny Norton and Bob Ramsey have actually purchased shovels, especially for this event. They're so excited to help out that day, so please come on down. And there's also another opportunity on Friday in Phoenix, and sign up for that if you can't do the Saturday tree planting. And the next is, on very sad note, so Andrea Esquer, who's pictured there so beautifully with her father, Elias Esquer, they're lions in the community. Her mother, Cecile, was just such a mentor to me. She's such a wonderful activist. The whole family is a family of activists, and you can think of no better models for myself and for the community than the Esquer family. Cecile was, excuse me, Andrea was a funny, sardonic, hilarious, smart, passionate, committed woman. The fight for social justice and economic justice meant so much to her, and she was so supportive of so many, always humbling herself, putting herself in the background while others maybe took the spotlight, but we're going to miss her greatly, and Tempe will be a little less because of her loss. Thank you.
Councilman Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor, and also to the Andreas, or to the Esquer family, they're just so powerful, and their loss is felt, and our thoughts and prayers go out, and it's hard. On a note, I do have to address, we had an opioid task force meeting yesterday, and it was just a great meeting, over 30 people there from a variety of different cities, from Mesa, Chandler, people representing various departments through the county, state, federal levels. We had Bill Montgomery out there, and it was really powerful, really just a sit-down session addressing the crisis, finding ways to advocate and to educate, and also to support programs that really make a difference in our community, and it's just great to see the ability or the outreach regionally that's taking part of this, and it seems like it's getting bigger and bigger every time we meet. So I really do appreciate that. It's a worthwhile cause, and we really want to make an impact within our community, so thank you for coming out. In addition to that, I will be doing a coffee talk in May, I believe, May 20th, on the crisis, so I always invite all our residents, our neighbors, to come out, be educated, look at the programs that we have out there, and then find the resources that we can provide. So it'll be a great meeting. Also, I want to say thank you, or not thank you, but my daughter, Jillian, had her last senior game at Desert Vista High School, and she, I'm just so proud of her. She got a scholarship to Bradley University for, to go to school, and she will be playing softball there also, so I just want to say, I'm very proud of you, baby, and congratulations. And I know that was your last game at Desert Vista, but you still have more to play, because you have to go to the state championship, so thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just sad condolences for the Esquer family, and what a loss to this community, and they're just an amazing family that has really, has just made a significant, a significant and positive impact, and Andrea will be missed significantly. And one thing I just want to say, save the date, we have our upcoming community salutes. I don't know if we've got a slide for that or not, but yeah, we do, and it is actually on May 8th. It's Monday, 5:30 at Tempe Center for the Arts, and it's our opportunity as a community to wish well all those young individuals that have committed to serve our country in the armed forces, and I want to give a great shout out to Parrish and his committee that worked really hard to put this together. This is our third year, and it's just been really fantastic, and I know the parents and the families really do appreciate the thought that these young people, after they graduate from high school, have committed to go into the service, and we just want to wish them well, make sure they stay safe, and come home to us in this community. So this is the first year we've invited the public, and I really do hope that our community will come out and share in the celebration with us.
Thank you. Councilmember Granville.
There we go. So yeah, the slide is for the Arbor Day 5K. It is awesome for a couple of reasons. The first one being, it is the cheapest chip-timed 5K you will ever find. It's $20. If you do it before, it's $25 a day of. For the people who run 5Ks, you know that that's basically... people who run 5Ks, you know that that's basically free for a 5K. I don't know why we don't charge more, but we don't. And the other great part about it is for every, what is it, like three, three runners, four runners, we plant a tree. So we actually raise money doing this. So whether you walk, run, hike, walk your dog, whatever the case may be, your money's going towards a good cause and it's going to allow us to plant more trees in the city of Tempe, which as, as the previous slide said, twelve years ago was the best time, but now's a pretty okay time too. And of course, it's in Quanis Park, which is just, you know, you really can't go wrong there. The other one is, I also have a series of meet your council member things going up. They are on Monday, the twenty-fourth, at Changing Hands at six to eight PM. Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, at The Lakes from six to eight PM. And Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, from six to eight PM at Boulders on Broadway, that'll be the one with the beer. But feel free to come out to any of them, we can talk about whatever you'd like, talk about city stuff ideally, but yeah, it'll be a good time, they always are.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my, my family's been in Arizona since the forties and we've watched with admiration families like the Mitchells and the Arredondos that have, have this depth and breadth of history in this community. And another family that I've always thought of in that category is the Esquire family. And I've had, I did a research paper in my master's where I did a, a lot of research on the history of Tempe and I met with, met with Harry and I met with a few other longtime Tempeans and I met with Elias and talked about the history of his family and all the stuff that they've been through and experienced here. And I know that that whole family was so proud of Andrea and her career and the hard work that she did as a legal advocate. And she'll be missed a lot. And I, I want to add one more thing to this and that is that my heart really goes out to Elias because he has faced a lot of tragedy in, in recent years and, you know, if, if he ever gets a chance to see this, I just want to make sure he knows we all love him and, and care for him and, and want to make sure he, he knows that he has a lot of family, Tempe family here, in addition to his family members that are here to support him. And I know Marcos is, is, and Elias have been together a lot in recent days and my heart goes out to their whole family.
Thank you. On that note, I, my, my heart, my thoughts and prayers really do go out to the Esquire family. I grew up right down the street from them. I've known the Esquire family since I was born. And, you know, I talked to Marcos the other day and it's, it's really amazing how many people that Andrea has touched along with Cecile and she's really takes a mold right out of, of her mother and her father. And I just want to wish them well and what a great individual and human being and she definitely will be missed. On that note, I also want to talk about, coming up this Saturday is the Tempe, it's our State of the Neighborhoods. It's really exciting, it's going to take place at the Tempe Hisse Museum, it's from eight to eleven-thirty. You see it here on the screen, I, I hope everyone will try to come. I know we're competing with a lot of different things on Saturday, but it, the, the turnout has been phenomenal. And this is actually, it's, it's a really great success story in terms of getting everybody involved, plus we're recognizing a lot of people and good neighbors in our community and looking at some of the great things that we can advocate for as, as we continue to make our neighborhoods the cornerstone of our community. And I also want to mention something at the council's pleasure that at a future IRS meeting, I would like to add for an issue, I think this is something that's important, we hear a lot about it, but I think it's important that we really consider doing an all mail-in ballot. I know that our Tempe Union High School District did do this, I think in two thousand and fifteen and in the city election in two thousand and sixteen, ninety-three percent of the voters voted by mail. And I know that we could have some cost savings there, so I'd like to see, and kind of leading off what, what the county recorder, Adrian Fontes, is looking at all mail-in ballot, I think we should, Tempe is already there, I mean, our high school district has done it, I think it would be great if we could look at, if we could follow suit with that. So if we could get that on the next issue review session, I, I would like that as well. And with that, we are done with our public, our comments and I will turn to public appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda. Matters discussed by the public during public appearances cannot be discussed by the city council unless they are specifically listed on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, speakers' visual aids and recorded tapes are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal, impertinent or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous, bless you, while addressing the city council or while attending this meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, clapping, stomping of feet, yelling or any similar demonstrations are also prohibited and violations of the rules may result in the removal of the city council meeting. Again, you have up to three minutes and under scheduled public appearances, we have Mr. Tonison. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record.
My name is Bill Tonison. I live at one oh-five East Fifteenth Street in Tempe. I have mixed feelings about my appearance tonight because I came here with a chip on my shoulder. I've lived here for forty years and suffered Tempe government's overreach. Despite the obstacles that planning and building safety have harassed me with over the years, we've managed to buy and now own seven homes, ten apartment properties and two office buildings. On the other side, it turns out that this meeting is being recorded live. So my wife has been texting me. She said, do not embarrass me. I don't think that you can tell me what kind of artwork I can put on my property. I put up with it and I've decided to take a stand. One of the properties that I own and recently purchased is the seminary building, the LDS Seminary Building, across from Tempe High. I put up a gesture, I gave you a picture, do you see the picture, the, so I found some plastic flowers and some vases and pictures of the prophets of the, of the church from Joseph Smith, some speakers and an old clock. So I made an impromptu gesture and I put them up in front of the building. I was cited and I'm informed that, on my third notification, that you will likely file criminal charges against me. Now, this is one component, but also telling me what color I can or cannot paint my building or whether it has to have paint, it goes on. But I'm only here to comment on the art. You cannot tell me this because the First Amendment of the Bill of Rights, the Constitution guarantees me freedom of speech and expression and I have voluntarily, voluntarily, I voluntarily taken a middle path to ensure that I don't get harassed. That won't work because I, I still think you're going to come after me. So I've listed what I'm willing, go ahead, am I done, sorry?
No, you could, if you could wrap up, I'll give you a couple more.
I just would read the, the four things that I, I don't have to, but I'm volunteering to, and I have reassured in writing, planning staff. One, the work I install will not be a call to violence. Two, it will not be obscene. Three, it will not involve commercial speech. Or four, it will not be unsafe.
Thank you.
So if you guys come after me, I will be disappointed.
Thank you. You want to ask a question? All right. Next item on our agenda is our unscheduled public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under unscheduled public appearances? If so, please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record. Yes?
Yes. Good evening, my name is Mario Martinez and I live in Tempe. I would, I would like to say some comments regarding Kobe Granville's employee abuse actions, okay? And I believe that his actions need to be viewed within the context of his overall actions. On April seventh, at seven forty-five in the morning, which was the morning right after Kobe was informed by the council that he will receive a council reprimand, Kobe posted on social media a claim that would be evaluated by the Tempe police later that day. Using a photo that I took of him at the April sixth meeting, which dealt with his abuse reprimand, Kobe humorously announced to over eight thousand of his social media followers that he had his quote, "own personal" quote, "stalker who took such" quote, "good photos of him," referring to me, of course. Okay? The pain of the abusive psycho slur was painfully felt by people who cared for others with mental health concerns, which fortunately, I've never experienced. As for me, a professional associate of mine recently lost his daughter, who was murdered in cold blood. She was executed, along with another woman, by a handgun at the hands of a homicidal stalker. It was not a joke. Only a narcissistic abuser would utter such humorous and completely unsubstantiated quote, psycho stalker comments on social media. That is exactly what council member Granville did. Anyone who thinks that I will be silent on this matter does not know me very well. Stalkers do rape, torture and murder people. That is exactly why it is a serious criminal offense. I was simply attending a council meeting when I took the picture that Kobe reposted online. I was not engaged in any stalking or participating in any other disruptive behavior when I was right here in these council chambers. In fact, I immediately reported Kobe stalking concerns to the Tempe police. According to the police, Kobe told them that he was safe and he wasn't being stalked at all. Okay? When innocents go to jail, it's because they were falsely accused. It took me two and a half hours of my working time, which meant lost family income, to gather the information and give this to the Tempe police. As a Tempe public official, Kobe posted false stalking allegation online against a citizen with no record of stalking. Kobe did this right after he told the public that he was so, so sorry for his previous abusive actions. By perpetrating these actions, Kobe proficiently proved why he is the ethical disgrace of the Tempe City Council. Thank you.
You can't, it's not scheduled.
But I think when somebody addresses you directly, we have a history of allowing an individual to respond.
Go ahead.
So, first off, Mario, I, I have my own personal opinions, of course.
Do you expect me to believe you?
That I have my own personal opinions? I think so. I think that one's undisputed. And my own personal opinions, I think are, are, you know, what I said. But it was pointed, yeah, I mean, I, this is just, I'm not, I'm not...
That's a criminal offense, Kobe.
Okay, okay, I'll just walk away, I don't want to hear.
Just let him talk.
I mean, I, I get that I am not a trained professional, but I certainly am an individual who has individual opinions. And I don't even know how many things you've filed now, four, five, six, against me. I don't know how many times you've come and spoken. Oddly enough, it used to be these weren't televised and I advocated to have them televised and I think they should be televised. And I think you have an absolute right to come here and take pictures of me instead of listening to me. I think the thing that concerns me, and I, by the way, once it was brought to my attention that there are people that have more serious as opposed to colloquial stalking slash mental health issues, I took that down within just a few hours and I regret that I put it up at all because it's not something to make light of. You know, I, a couple of times, we've reached out to try and talk and each time, you haven't really been fond of that, that one time you did meet with me, you, it was like a twenty-minute conversation about the city manager being fired four years ago. Here, here's the, the fact of it, I'm here for three more years. Clearly, you have concerns about the way that I make decisions. I would like to make better decisions. I would continue to offer to you or anyone else my interest in becoming better at what I do for a living. So if you want to meet and chat, I will always meet and chat with you. I will always meet and chat with any resident. I find that it helps me know things I didn't know before. That said, I, I, I think just coming and, and harping, whether it's online or whether it's whatever, like that doesn't move Tempe forward. It doesn't get rid of me, I'm here for three more years. So I'd much rather that the focus of our conversations were what can be done to move Tempe in a positive direction. Because that's ultimately why every single one of us is here, because we care, because we want to improve things. And maybe, I don't always do it the best way, I'm sure we would all say that at some point, we don't do it the best way in retrospect. But that doesn't mean that each one of us, including myself, doesn't have that desire. And the, the last thing I would say is this, and I know you're going to take offense to it, but it is not meant to be offensive and I'm sorry for that. So I'll use my own self as an example first. Four or five years ago, went through a horrible breakup, I've mentioned it before in council meetings, I did not take it well. And somebody said something to me that was some of the smartest thing they ever said to me, is they said, hey Kobe, why don't you go talk to someone about this? Because here's why you should talk to them. If there is nothing wrong, all you did was waste a couple of hours, there's no downside. But if talking to this person would help you, there is upside. And I would say that, and so I took their advice and I went, a couple of times, it was fine, life moves on, I don't think there's any shame in that. And I would say that, I would make that same suggestion to you, that there is no downside, but there could be upside because the thing that's inside of you about me, it's not going to go away. It doesn't just go away, right? But I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to listen and I'm happy to talk about the things I can do better and I'm happy to work in ways to improve Tempe. But that thing inside of you isn't going to talk itself out, or especially social media itself out. You're, you're going to have to figure that out on your own, man, because I'm here for three more years.
Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address us under public appearances? Seeing none, we are adjourned, but we do need to finish the executive session upstairs.